I'll call the meeting to order. June 17th, 2019, Lincoln County Board of County Commissioners, if you've joined me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Correspondence. These are just ads. Do you want one of these? Okay. It's like we have some Lincoln Park Manor bills from street plumbing. I think this would be the water softener issue.
We paid for it.
See, attached invoice is not paid, so that would be...
Well, we approved last.
So that would, there's an additional, okay. So, 374 for, they're just getting dimensions.
Oh, we paid for the softener, those heads, that didn't we?
She has paid here.
Oh, okay.
Paid here, paid here.
There you go.
So these are the additional ones. 374 dollars in filters, 190 something for that, an evaporator foam no rinse, 192. Tubes, filters, 322, supreme, I don't know, must be a fluid. 105, 90, let's see, 1563. These are all from Street, so they're all parts, filter, 105. Okay, so less the, let's see, 6,500, less like about 6,700 we already paid, it's 9700 total.
Okay.
So it's about three, almost 3,000 additional dollars, huh? 2,500 maybe? I'm not sure. What is so, what's the big...
Now, 400 here, what's the...
Valves, oh, clogged drain and assisted living.
They're not even...
That's from April, that's from April now.
Oh, okay. Seated drain and assisted living.
These are all from April.
It's called 400.
What's a lift station? Oh, the, the lift.
Lift.
Yeah. It's air conditioning in the kitchen, filters, bulbs, smell of gas. But for 441 dollars, I'd think they'd have fixed something, right? It's not just the call.
Maybe they did, maybe they found some leak, a gas leak, and maybe fixed some fitting or something.
That was what, May, or...
That was Florida, back in...
Oh. Why are there all of these bills back from 18, Dawn?
Question, we don't know, but they would just send us their invoice and hand off the bills.
So are all these...
We have to look at the digits.
So they had a pile up and...
So this would be with Greg Babcock, though.
Oh, yeah, he left, you know.
Yeah.
That was before I was in the area.
Are you thinking that Street's just in pillars?
They're like keeping a ta, they're basically just keeping an account, and they haven't individually sent these invoices for you to pay. Well, I don't see anything that's not repair-related, except...
We should maybe ask them, how come they wait six months to bill us?
Right.
For a year, there was five 18, that's a year ago.
Right.
I mean...
Plus, I mean, some of this, like, this is a snaking. Again, we're paying for someone outside to come in and do a snake in a drain. I thought that's part of the, like you said, the appendix A on the lease.
Well, that's something needs to be done.
There's another snaking, yeah. Let's just, let's put those to the side. Okay. Dawn, do we need to discuss county clerk's budget information for 2020? Is that...
That's your valuations.
Oh, the total, okay, the total. Okay, so, real estate assessed valuation for the county, 38,419,279. State assessed, 21,736,297. Personal property, 996,881. Total value, 61,152,457, with new improvements of 61,854, and remodels, renovations of 15,962. So, then it has a little break down, but... All right. And this is... Is this the board that Mr. Wallace was on? Yeah, the juvenile detention facility in Gary County Secure Care Center. Maybe we'll wait to address that till we see what happens with the third commissioner here. I think we both have enough going on right now. Minutes from June 10th and June 13th. Did you see anything that needed fixed or changed?
No, I read it. I could glance over again a little bit over here.
Dawn Under Thursdays, you might want to take that postrophe out. On, down under Thursday meetings, in the line itself.
Oh, I think, uh, an emergency management, Dawn, David Doe, is he going down to Corpus Christi, Texas? I thought it was College Station, Texas.
He wrote in and said, report Corpus Christi.
Corpus Christi? Oh, okay. I thought that was back when we discussed that, I thought it was...
Or that's what he said, that's what I thought.
Okay, Corpus Christi's way down.
I remember him saying College Station.
Well, I do too, when we approved it way back when.
Yeah, I remember that, you saying that, but I don't...
And now this is Corpus Christi in the minutes, and I don't know what's right or wrong, I'm just...
Yeah.
It doesn't really matter, I mean, he's going somewhere down there, and so, whatever.
Yeah.
We can find out, I guess, later. Other than that, I don't see anything with the minutes. I saw that Corpus Christi, you know, remember that, I thought, because I remember that, I said that's Texas thing, and then, College Station.
It looks like maybe if we take a, if we take a recess, I need to be more prompt on the exact time, because it says that I recessed for 15 minutes, but then it says I started three minutes early, so I don't want to do that. So, remind me, if we go by this clock, I need to stick to it. It says that I recessed for 15 minutes, but then reconvened three minutes before the 15 minutes was up, so I don't want to, I don't want to make a habit of that.
Well, it's no big deal. You was, we didn't have the people here, that, so we took time.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, whatever you want to do.
Yeah.
But I don't think it's an issue, do you?
No, I mean, I just don't want it to appear that way continually in the minutes. Okay, I don't see anything really that...
I don't either, they look fine to me. I'll make a motion to approve, uh, the June 10th, 2019 minutes.
I'll second. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved.
I'll also make a motion to approve the June 13th, 2019 special meeting we had. We had a meeting Thursday, if you guys have, don't know, we were doing two a week here lately, because we had quite a bit of business, we were catching up on and things to discuss. And on the 2013, we really discussed, uh, dealing with Mr. Walter on directors, or no, for one thing, on the EMS, on the transition he's going to do going in there, also a job description of director of public works, highway department, uh, job description, and some evaluations. So that's why we met, met, uh, last Thursday. I think we're going to meet Wednesday too, this week, right?
Yes, Wednesday this week.
So we're doing two, we, we have just a lot of stuff, and it's, but we're catching up.
Also, so we can make phone calls in between.
Yeah, and because, so anyway, that's why we met Thursday, and I saw approve the June 13, make a motion to approve the June 13th, 2019 special meeting minutes.
I'll second that. Is there any further discussion? If not, those in favor vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes are approved.
Do we need to do anything on this?
Uh, no, that's just for our information.
Okay.
And we will have Mr. Grace here first, so I guess we have a few minutes to discuss anything that needs brought before. I will say, are we having, that woman's not coming today from that other company, or Thursday, or Wednesday she is? Okay. So I did talk to Haskell County, who has hub, um, for their benefits company, and they said they really like it. They're a county of only 4,000, but she said it cost them $1,000 a month, but they're basically hands-free on the entire benefits portion of the HR service. So I think that that definitely is something we can consider, except we can compare it to the percentage that Mr., was it Day?
Yeah.
Day insurance? Yeah.
And we haven't...
And we haven't heard the third company yet, but...
The other...
Right. And I did not call Gary County, um, I will, I guess, I just, I wanted to call the county that was our size, so... And she's, that clerk is feeling overwhelmed with that, because they still have HR in her office, it's only her and one other person, and they're slightly bigger than us, not much, but she was saying...
Who's this?
The clerk from Haskell County.
Oh, Haskell.
And she said she would be appreciative if they moved HR out of her purview, because it does kind of complicate things for her office, not only with time constraints, but then all of the public perception on dealing with HR falls on her as an elected official. And that is difficult as a one-person show, so it's probably good that we're moving in the direction of taking HR out of the clerk's office, but we probably just need to watch the finances of it and not overspend, you know? So I believe Mr. Grace is here. Dawn, is he out in the hall? Can we see him? I thought he walked past.
Come on up, if you want to, we're ready.
Oh, okay. Who are you?
Hi, I'm good, how are you?
John.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
Could you pass me a pen, please?
What?
Pass me a pen, please. Thank you.
Well, thanks for coming.
Yes.
We were just wanting to mostly, we basically go over where we're at with Lincoln Park Manor with you, and, uh...
Good.
Status of, yeah, we might turn that off.
It's hard to hear that.
And, uh, first of all, I guess whether you have like 33 patients or residents now?
Thirty, I think 31 today.
And I wanted to update you, we've worked, I know the roof had been leaking.
Right.
Uh, I got with Dawn, and we've worked as the new, uh, uh, there's a new adjuster right at the state, Dawn, and the insurance company.
Oh, the insurance company has a new adjuster.
Yeah, so we, that's why there's been a slowdown in this.
Okay.
And, uh, so we get with them, and they're getting with Ray Ruppin to fix that roof.
Yeah.
They're doing that, so that's going on. They're going to probably go down into the ceiling tiles, where there's, I know, concern of mold and this and that.
Yeah, yeah.
So, that's coming, we're, we're working on it, pushing it. I called them several times, seems like you have to get, stay on top of it.
Right.
Whether that is fine. And also, I got with this, uh, for the fire...
So they're gonna, did you say they're gonna kind of look in the attic?
Yeah, they're gonna go down in there, yeah, and fix, not just the roof.
Look at that.
They have to redo that whole inner guts in there.
Yeah.
Well, someone had been mentioning mold.
Mold.
Yeah, and I don't know if it's there or not.
Well, and you guys, I was there before, water was running out, and coming out, lights, light, uh, I think some of the lights shorted out, and, you know, so it was, there's some damage there, and that does need, but anyway, we're looking into that, okay? And also, with the fire doors, I contacted this D H Space people, who had been dealing with this a year ago. I think we got with them last year, this Ashley Sperry estimator. We, uh, I got back with her, and they needed this Eric Johnson, Johnson Mayfield to give these, I don't know if it's blueprints, or it's a layout of the facility, so they could determine which fire doors needed in the cal, the construction was, with the found, with the door frames and stuff like that.
Yeah.
So, and this guy hadn't got back, so I'm getting with Johnson and then Sperry to get them going with all that, uh, because I know that was a concern of yours, and we've...
Right.
That's been slowed down here, and we're going to try to get that...
And that, what company is that?
Well, there's a D H Space, that's the ones who's going to do the...
Last year, the commission approved that bid, and it never happened.
We approved it, and it dropped, it just, so...
We, we approved it, and I believe you had Mr. Babcock employed, and there was not follow-through. In fact, he did come back to the commission, Mr. Babcock, and say that he needed fire ratings on the walls where the doors are being installed, and I advised him to get that from the architect that we paid.
Okay, right.
And I've not heard back since.
And they had the architects, Eric Johnson there.
Eric Johnson.
So I've dealt with them, and they're supposed to get the paperwork to this Ashley, what's her name there, uh, that D H Space, so they're going to get going here on the fire doors too, and all that stuff, okay? And we had the bid, there was like 20...
They're at the Wichita office?
I don't know if it's Wichita or Kansas City.
Oh, okay.
I just called her, and I never asked her exactly where that's at, okay?
Gotcha.
So we're pursuing this stuff, I know it's...
Okay.
We need fixes, but...
Now, who is Ashley Sperry?
She's the estimator for that D H Space.
Okay.
I talked to her, the one that's going to do the fire doors.
Right.
Actual doors, and the other, whatever else is needed there. They have a list, an itemized list there.
Okay.
And I could give you a copy of that if you want.
Yeah, we probably should have, and then...
That shows you, we're pushing this, and, uh...
And I think, um, this would be something we'll just have to check out with the fire marshal.
Right, okay.
Just to make sure that they...
Why don't they, probably have to coordinate with the fire marshal when they're doing the installation, all that, right, to make sure everything's up to code and all that?
Well, we approved the highest rating doors, so there isn't anything higher than that.
Shouldn't be, problem.
But is there, would you do something like that, though, is there a recertification by the, by the state, or something like that? I don't know.
Yeah, um, I'll have to check on that.
Okay, well, that's where we're at here, we want to talk to you about our future.
Good.
You know, you've been working here several years, and we, uh, we had the issue with, you know, your rent.
Right, right.
Not paying the rent, going over a year.
Yeah.
What's the status of that?
Right.
And if we, and also, on some accounts payable issues, uh, do, what's your position on that stuff?
Okay.
Do you plan to pay that or not, or what?
Well, I'd like to work something out, I really would, okay?
Okay.
If I may preface the conversation, that a few pieces of correspondence have come to us.
Right.
One of which has been suggesting that the commission made promises to do certain things that have not been done to the nursing home, which, if that's true, then I think you need to provide us the documentation of that, because I do not remember these things, and if, if your company is claiming that the commission did not come through with something that was agreed upon, then that needs to be documented and substantiated, because as far as I'm concerned, we have done the renovation, um, that was all to be worked out internally with the, the companies that won the bids, and then your management staff, so the, the commission was doing nothing more than paying the bills for that. And I believe that there was another piece of correspondence that insinuated that because certain rooms were unavailable during the renovation, that that was a reason that the rent was not being paid, and again, the internal coordination of how that renovation was to happen was completely up to the, the workings of who works there, and who you have managing, and then who the company was doing the project. That wasn't on the commission to coordinate, and that would also, that would also be a question that goes back to Mr. Audit, or, I'm sorry, Eric Johnson.
Okay.
Because he was heading that. So if there is a problem with the way that the renovation happened, and there were rooms that were supposed to be available that weren't, then that needs to be addressed with Mr. Johnson, and we paid him to do that job, so that needs to be reevaluated.
Is that, do I hear it?
Yes.
Okay.
He was the one coordinating the entire renovation.
Yeah, I didn't know that.
We paid him to be the contractor.
Um, and at some point, I'd like to request an executive session, so we can go over some financial things, so...
Okay, well, I have you on from 10:15 to 10:45, so we still have...
Whatever you like.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't we discuss...
One, one thing I would, I was thinking here is that, um, as you know, I think communication is important on these fixes, on these items, and it would be helpful, at least to us, if we could kind of come up with a, a clear understanding of, okay, what are you going to, what's the county pay for?
Yes.
What do we pay for?
Right.
Well, have you, we, we've addressed that there's no appendix A to the lease.
That was in that appendix A, the original lease, there was supposed to be, there was it says...
The lease has an appendix A mentioned, and then there's no appendix A.
There was never, nothing, nothing put in it.
In other words, we...
Which would be this, what you just...
Yeah, which would be what this is, yeah.
That's the kind of thing.
That way, then, we don't have a misunderstanding.
Yeah.
You know what you got to pay for, we know what we pay for. Not because each week...
Yes.
We deal with some issue like that.
And, 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 uh, we're willing to pay rent, if we can kind of get this worked out, so we have a clear understanding, first of all, who pays for what, and then, secondly, how do we communicate with each other, so that if we have something come up, we don't have like what happened here with the fire doors. I mean, it sounds like part of it was our fault, maybe some of it was yours, but it doesn't matter. The point is that we didn't get it done.
Yeah, we need to fix it.
And we need to fix it, and that's what I'd like to do for the future, is to say, okay, here's how we should handle things. You want, uh, should we come up here every month and kind of give you a list, and then we have an update? Uh, how do we handle emergencies? You know, let's say that we had, all of a sudden, something in the building needed an emergency. I think it used to be, we'd get ahold of Terry, and Terry...
The chair, yeah, I think it was the chair at the time.
Yeah, the chair, okay. But those kinds of things, and if we can get that worked out, I think we all be happier.
Be better, yeah.
The other thing is that, you know, we're, we're just continuing to focus on doing a good job for the people who live there, the residents, continuing to, we have a new administrator, as you know, we're making some changes, but I think they're for the positive, um, and we're going to stay focused on, um, you know, doing a good job for the residents, and then we would just like to have a, a good working relationship with the county, and be able to handle some of these maintenance kinds of things.
Do we think on assisted living, that we could maybe get that back open, if, if we could get more people in there?
Well, certainly.
Obviously, that's, but that...
Yeah.
Does that need to be promoted more by you or by us than advertised? Because I hear surrounding areas are full assisted living, and, you know, we can hold up to what, nine, I think, right?
Mm-hmm, right.
And you would say maybe some of those rooms maybe need, uh...
They need a facelift, yeah.
Fixed up, refurbished?
Yeah.
But if, I don't know, is that a plan, do you do that, or where are we at in the status of assisted living?
Well...
Anything different?
Nothing different. The, I was asking Beth what the census has been, and we've pretty much been five people in assisted living for a long time now. Before I took it over, I don't know if they ever got to nine, uh, I don't, I don't have, I could go back and look, but, uh, it's very hard to staff it at five.
Yeah.
And what we ran into was, it used to be that the state, the Department on Aging, would allow, um, us to not have staff at night over there, and that was for several years, and so, all of a sudden, they then said, no, you can't do that, you have to have a staff person around the clock. Now, even though the building is connected, and what, in the past, we would have someone walk through there at night, you know, every few hours, so that added cost to the operation.
Yeah, I know, you got a full-time nurse there, nurse there, right?
Yeah, yeah.
More money.
And, and, so, if we could find, and, and one thing we've looked at as far as a workaround on that, uh, if we could put in some cameras, and we think that the Department on Aging might accept that, which then would allow us to staff it a little differently.
Okay.
So, um, that's a possibility, but...
If you put cameras in, maybe then you wouldn't need full-time hours.
That's right, that's right.
Well, there you go, that would be...
I mean, so, so that's a possibility, but...
Okay, okay. Because that would be good to get that back open, I know you have to, but how shall you deal with that?
Green.
Yes.
Once she leaves, you...
Once she leave, okay, we'll just, I guess we'll take a break.
Okay.
Alexis with the baby here, so...
Sure, that's fine.
Would you want to take a break, or, uh, because it's just me and him, isn't really the commission?
Yeah, no, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I don't have my help today that I normally have, so, um, um, give me two minutes, I'm just going to go to the restroom.
Sure, sure.
Okay, apologize.
No problem.
Did you drive in today?
Yeah, yeah, I'm going to meet with the staff when we get done.
How's your new administrator working?
I think good, yeah.
Okay? I haven't been up there since I met him with you.
Oh, you haven't, yeah.
I had a recent idea.
No, I, uh, I'm just impressed with how he's approaching things, and he's got the respect of the staff, and, um, so we're, we're pleased with him. He lives in Salina, and he, his wife is a activity director over in the nursing home in Salina, so, uh, but, um, they've taken some furniture out of the assisted living and put it over in the nursing home, and kind of created a more nice living room over there, so that's good.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, yeah.
I don't know why, I know Alexis isn't here, and I won't elaborate.
Yeah.
I don't know why this doors issue...
Oh, yeah.
Died, I mean, we, I've just talked to him now, and, about, uh, they were supposed to be emailing me some of this stuff, and they haven't, so...
Yeah.
I don't know, we'll have to get on him here.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And we've just, we haven't been talking much, boy, I just, I've asked about it.
Oh, you know, assisted living and some of that, so...
Yes, so, um, I guess I would just like to say, as far as advertising goes, because you had mentioned that, and I think you mentioned it because it was mentioned maybe from you.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there seems to be some communicate, communication issue on who's running the business.
Yes.
I've had many people come to the commission, or me individually as a commissioner, and ask what we can do about Lincoln Park Manor. Um, we don't operate the business, and so I think it needs to be understood that you're fully responsible for all of the overhead that comes with operating the business.
Yeah.
That being said, um, that leads us to this issue of who's responsible for what. So you have, and I, I see how you broke this down, you have county or tenant.
Yeah.
And then, so under county, uh, structural portions of the building, and items attached to the building, glass, electrical systems, plumbing, hot water heater, I think we understand all of that, concrete, um, parking lots, sidewalks, et cetera.
Yeah.
Uh, tenant, uh, full-time maintenance person to provide repairs, minor plumbing repairs, faucets, toilets, things clean, okay, this is where we have an issue.
Okay.
Because we're getting bills from street plumbing for snaking drains. Um, I, I think we kind of came to the consensus that since it's in the lease, that the maintenance person would be there, if it's not a major clog that needs an actual plumbing repair, and it can be snaked, that should probably be on the tenant.
Okay.
Um, regular and ongoing cleaning of carpets, tiles, equipment, yes, cleaning, yes, and I will also say cleaning supplies have been billed to the county, which would go under tenant.
Yeah.
Uh, county, items to comply with state, federal building codes, standards of safety, habitability, accessibility, including pertaining to the options of assisted living and skilled nursing, yes. Um, tenant, equipment used in cleaning, such as tools, carts, cleaning equipment, buckets, buckets, excuse me, mops, light bulbs, that's a tongue twister, soap, salt for water softener, et cetera. Right, so all the dispensable, usable items and the cleaning equipment, I'd agree with that.
Now, there's, there's some confusion, I guess, about, um...
Beds?
Nuts and bolts and, and, um...
Hardware.
Hardware stuff, yeah.
Like if a bed needs fixed?
Yeah, well, I think on the bed need fixed, I understand, we fixed that, I mean, that, but like if there's a faucet that needs fixed.
And, uh, look...
And that's where I get confused about, you know...
The plumbing part.
Yeah.
Like if you need a new faucet in the bathroom, and you got to install that.
We've been paying for those, though.
Okay, I didn't know.
Because I know we've paid for toilets, we've paid for faucets, I've seen that from the bills.
Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the building, and part of the...
But, but there are some things that went unbilled last year, if you look at the top of this invoice, you can see that, I, we're just receiving those bills now, it's several hundred, well, a thousand or more dollars' worth of things, which I'm not disputing any of those, because they look like parts that belong to...
Right.
Other items in the building we own.
Right, yeah.
Um...
Well, I think the more clarity we can get, I think we're better off.
I agree, I agree, that's what...
Right, right, and I'm agreeing with the list that you made, I mean, this all makes sense.
Now, we could maybe...
Yeah.
Add more to it, or...
Yeah, no, I don't have a problem with that.
No, that's good, and that way we know where we're standing on this, though.
So the county is responsible for the washers and dryers, because we own those, correct?
Yes.
Um, the beds, we own all the beds.
Yes.
And I was informed that we... And I was informed that we own all the mattresses, or just ten, I think?
No, they own ten mattresses.
Oh, we own all but ten.
You, you own ten of the mattresses?
Okay, yeah.
Whatever.
All right.
Okay.
So I guess we buy the mattresses, is that it?
I don't know. What you did was half the bed, you don't have the mattresses, I don't know, because.
Well, that came with the last purchase, that she's saying the last owner didn't sell to the new owner, which you purchased from.
Okay. Sure.
I don't know about to the.
But the, I know the repair, uh, repair items for the bed, we paid for.
You have paid for bedding repairs, okay. So then it has tables, chairs, and equipment, which we own most of that in there, I assume. And then, um, I've seen the inventory list, and I believe we own the dressers in the rooms, and things like that.
Okay.
Um, so most of the, what do I call it, furniture?
Yeah.
We own.
Right.
And really, then, if the furniture breaks, it's our responsibility to fix it, so we own it.
Well, here's the issue, though, a lot of times a landlord doesn't provide the furnishings. You know, if you move into an apartment, let's say, you don't necessarily rent the couch too. However, uh, in this situation, we could discuss that. I think the issue is, is there a demand for new, is there a demand for a certain look? Is that, I mean, is that all to be on the taxpayers to supply that, because?
I think all that falls in, what is the plan? You know, do, do we want to replace?
Well, the issue is, when the county was renting to Mid-America, I believe it's called, which was pre-LPM.
Right.
A lot of those things were not then purchased by the new owner. So, Dawn, how did we discuss that, that?
When they terminated the lease with Lincoln Park Manor.
With?
Lincoln Park Manor was gonna move everything out, or we could buy it.
Mid-America. Okay, you said Lincoln Park Manor, but Mid-America?
When Lincoln Park Man, or, yes, sorry, when Mid-America, when we ended the contract with, with Mid-America to rent to Kristen Robinson and Lincoln Park Manor, we had to buy Mid-America, all of the equipment, all of the disposable supplies, all of the food, and the van.
Who had to buy?
Lincoln County.
The county.
Oh, the county.
And Kristen was supposed to pay us back.
I see, okay.
Okay, so the next owner was supposed to purchase the items that, that the county purchased with the transition of.
That's, everybody's gotta be on the items.
Okay.
Because she never paid for them.
Right, because a typical landlord situation is a shell. It's not necessarily a furnished, I mean, there, there are those situations, but I, we were providing the shell once upon a time, but now we own these additional pieces because we purchased them from someone who left. And that was never purchased then by the new operator.
Okay.
Um, so we could have some more discussion on that, but I'll move on. Tenant, does the landscaping and the mowing and the snow removal. And, um, the county's responsible for fire equipment, sprinklers, contracts for lifts. Now, does that mean the special lifts, like for the vans?
That's what we paid, that's what we built for our lift.
Okay, but we don't own the lifts, we, or we do? Is that why we're paying the contract, because we own the lifts?
I think we lease it, don't we? We gotta pay a lease contract?
Yeah, we own the lifts because.
Okay, that was part of it, okay.
Okay, okay.
So contract, so, okay, smoke detectors, uh, fire enunciator panels, nurse call systems, cameras, security equipment, generator, sewer pipes, roofing paneling, and the exterior of the building, and the ceilings. Um, the tenant, items needing repaired that cost less than a thousand dollars and, or can be repaired. Does that mean and can be repaired by the tenant?
Yeah, or no, it's supposed to be.
Items needing repaired that cost less than a thousand.
Can be repaired by the tenant, and then will be reimbursed by the county now.
Oh, oh, I see.
I understand that was just a policy that has been in place.
Well, that wasn't in the lease, was it? I don't think.
I don't know.
You're just saying that's how they've been doing the billing.
That's how they've been doing it, but.
So we haven't paid to Lincoln Park Manor, though, we've been just receiving the invoices here. And they come here to the clerk's office, and we've just been paying.
Okay, okay, so then.
I think we prefer it that way, that would be the original receipt.
You pay the bill then, rather than reimburse by the county.
Yeah, yeah, they just, I think someone, like whoever's, um, Mr. O'Shale, I think you have right now, he just goes, yeah, he would just go up to.
And then he goes to hardware's door.
Or make a phone call to Street, or go up to, yeah.
He's asked me several times, cause we had a door that was more expensive than that. And I said, go ahead, and we proved it, we proved it here, that one door by the kitchen, and there's another one there, I heard.
Yeah.
Now that may be maybe.
Yeah.
So I would like to point out, though, under tenant for cleaning, um, we have been, we have paid for the, um, the sewer, uh, what do I wanna call that?
The sewer, uh, snake?
No, not just the snake, the actual flushing of the system, what's that called?
The grease trap.
The grease trap.
Oh, the grease trap, okay.
The grease trap cleaning and the hood, the oven hood cleaning, we have been asked to pay for. And I think we sent that one back, not sure if it came through again, but.
Okay.
That is a condition of using the facility, which would be a cleaning issue, not necessarily a repair or maintenance issue. So I think that needs to be established under cleaning.
Good.
And then under here, you have no less than monthly, the tenant shall provide a list of items for repair pursuant to the understanding listed above. Landlord shall have fifteen days, which should notify the tenant of the plan for repair. I would like to say that we have open meetings and I, and we get correspondence here.
Okay.
It's kind of an inconvenience if we have to write back, so if, if your maintenance man is willing to just make a quick appearance, or even send in correspondence, then we can deal with it in the meeting.
Call us.
Okay.
Yeah, that, you know, I deal with Jonathan quite a bit.
Sure.
I get along with him good, I think he's a good employee for you.
Yep. Sure.
If there's an emergency or something.
Um, but it was helpful, he came to the meeting here a couple of weeks ago, and it was very helpful that he could explain kind of what he wanted to do about the mixer, et cetera, et cetera. Then we, then we made a decision here, and then it's not questioned because it's already been decided in the open meeting. And I understand certain things need to be done in between.
Yeah.
But it was helpful when he came.
Good.
And no one's been reporting the census to us. Do you have someone assigned to do that, or?
I mean, Beth keeps it, um, how often do you want it?
It was supposed to be monthly, because that was the way that the rent was structured to correlate to the number in the census.
Right, right.
Um, in the event of an emergency, or if the tenant believes that the health, welfare of the residents is in jeopardy, tenant shall notify the county and seek immediate approval for actions. Agreed. Should the county not approve?
Should that be the chair?
Yes, um, yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Um, should the county not approve of those items, the tenant may move ahead with those repairs as to protect the health and welfare of the residents. I think that's understood. Any cost, well, I mean, I guess it depends on the budget issue. If there was something that we didn't have the money for, I mean, that's where we're gonna run into a problem.
Yeah.
If something gigantic occurred, since we have a line item specified for a specific amount, that may be questionable as to where we would pull that money from, but.
Okay.
But I understand what you're saying. You're saying if there's something serious, they need to take action on it.
Yeah, we need to get after it.
Can't wait for approval.
Like air conditioning.
Mm-hmm.
You see, we need to make, you know, we need to.
If it's a hundred out, you're gonna.
We gotta move that day.
You gotta fix it.
Yes, you're gonna call and have it, yeah.
Exactly, or heater in the.
Or heater.
Yeah, if it's zero out, the heater clicks.
I think to me, it would be something more disastrous, like flooding of the kitchen with a main intake line would be something we may not be able to financially do that day or make a decision on.
It would be, yeah, issue based on what it is.
Yeah, yeah. Any costs incurred by tenant for such repairs shall be applied dollar for dollar against the base rent due immediately following the date as, the date such costs were incurred. County owns the carpet machine and the buffer. The kitchen's dishwasher is leased from EcoLab and maintained by them. We're not, are we paying that lease? I've never seen that.
I think we are, yeah.
Okay, the ice machine is leased and paid for by Lincoln Park Manor, and the floor stripper and the low-speed scrubber are owned by Lincoln Park Manor. Well, that's good clarification. I just had those two little notes about the grease trap and.
So, yeah, I can, I can revise that and send you guys a copy.
Okay.
Um, and then, if you want us to go through some of the past stuff and try to maybe get a little bit more detail on some of these things, and then add that here, and then let's take another look at it.
And I, and the inventory, maybe, not as if your staff doesn't have enough to do, but it might be nice to have an updated inventory. We had asked Lincoln Park Manor prior.
Okay.
And not ever really received a detailed update. There was some, there was some attention to it, but I don't know how specific it is right now.
I can get that.
Yeah. So the rent issue, again, I mean, I am concerned about that. I think that there was an agreement made, and it's increasingly concerning because the debt to the county that was incurred from the last owner, you then took on a portion of that by offering to increase your rent payments at a base rate, I believe it was four hundred dollars a month. So we haven't seen any of that, we haven't recuperated any of that, yet we're still expending our line item dedicated to that facility. And then the public backlash of saying that we're not doing enough, it's, it's a little, you know, convoluted.
I hear ya. Um, when do you wanna go into executive session?
We can do that, we have, yeah. Do you want, would ten minutes be okay? Because we have only seven.
I think probably, yeah.
I'll make a motion here, which one would it be?
It would be, um, this, number four.
I'll make a motion to go into executive session, uh, with the commission and Mr. John Grace for ten minutes, for the purpose of discussing, uh, Lincoln Park Manor financial issues, and to discuss data relating to financial affairs or trade secrets of corporations, partnerships, trusts, and individual proprietorships, to reconvene in the courthouse, commission room, following this executive session.
With, with?
With, uh.
Uh, he's forty, but, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Oh, with.
I'm sorry.
You got it.
Okay.
With, I got you, with, uh, Commissioner and Mr. Grace.
Okay. It's been moved, oh, I'll second, it's been moved and seconded for the executive session for financial information disclosure. All those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We reconvene in ten minutes.
Very productive.
That's good to talk.
And I will, uh, go through and revise that sheet a little bit more.
Yeah, if you would, yeah, that looks good, though, I appreciate that. We're gonna, we're gonna name this appendix A, and we'll attach it to the lease when we agree, when we agree on it, we'll sign it.
Because that's what we wanted before, and I think you have a good outline there on that.
Good, thanks, guys.
And we'll get, I'll keep in touch, because obviously we gotta keep dealing with this stuff.
Yeah.
One way or another, what's gonna happen. My maid's coming here, one, you know, so something's gonna happen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Sure, go ahead.
Nice job, Kelly.
I shouldn't have given you my chair.
No, you should not have.
Do you want that chair or this one?
Is this telephone estimate, the, before we switch over, are we switching over?
I don't know that we've ever got to that point. I know I've ordered new phones.
Hello?
How are you?
I just thought Dawn mentioned that we were gonna maybe save money if we did this switch over, cause we were talking about buying new phones and all that.
We will, but we're gonna have to pay for the phones and things like that.
So that, yeah.
I told him to just kinda leave it where it's at.
And that difference will be, yeah, paid for in the first year, I got it. Okay. Do you have anything for us besides the budget request? Okay, so we have the treasurer's office, um, budget request, had a total of one hundred and twelve thousand, four hundred and twenty. That's for the two, twenty twenty proposed budget. The approved budget from two thousand nineteen was one oh nine and twenty-four dollars.
I am going to have an issue with computers. They're all on Windows Seven. And they're getting old, so they're gonna have to be replaced. I was thinking like two at a time.
Out of?
Out of, one out of motor, out of six.
Out of six, two at a time out of six is what you're saying, like over a year, two, two, two.
But Next Tech is telling me that maybe I will compromise. Maybe else's computers, so I'm still thinking there should be some way to upgrade some of them without having to do the whole thing, and I'm not buying new monitors.
Can you call an independent company besides Next Tech and just see what their opinion is?
Probably could.
Doesn't hurt to get information, because sometimes they have their angled bitchy sale, you know?
Yeah, yeah.
Um, do you have the breakdown, just out of curiosity, of, so last year's, I mean, I have last year's budget stowed away, but do you have, like, what you have here for the new budget proposal, do you have the breakdown from last year's what it was?
No, I just have commodities, contractual, and telephones.
Okay.
Lumped together.
Okay.
And a good portion of mine is post-H mailing tax statements and delinquent notices and so on and so forth.
Is this Next Tech IT divided by department for one whole plan? Dawn, do you know, or do you know?
I pay, and then I pay the same amount out for motor vehicle. And they've done a couple of things to help me out, but for the most part, I've had to pay extra. So I'm thinking.
Is your anticipated revenue taken out of this one? Or did you do, or do we just do that on the budget?
The only revenue that I would have that's not everyone's tax dollars is the motor vehicle county fees.
That's what I'm saying, right here.
Uh-huh.
Did you take this number from this number, or what do you do with it?
No, that's, no.
Where does that go?
That is motor vehicle fees, and usually I turn over twenty thousand dollars to you at the end of the year. So that's.
Into capital outlay?
To county general. That's part of the budget, you budget twenty thousand for me.
So where's the other twelve go?
For my expenses for motor vehicle. That's the report I give you every quarter.
Okay.
Showing you how much I paid for conferences and supplies and so forth.
Okay. But that's not, but you don't budget that in and then show a deduction from here?
No. Motor vehicle is totally separate, but I just thought I would show you.
Is it a separate fund, or a separate bank account, or is it just a separate fund?
Not anymore, it's a separate fund. It used to be a separate bank account.
How long ago was that?
Twenty years ago.
Oh, never mind, don't go back that far, I can't, my brain can't wrap around that, not today. Okay, I don't have any questions.
Are your computers, are they specialized for your job, or are they, in other words?
They just have to be compatible with movers.
With, with your software, yeah. You have specialized software, obviously, for all your tax, or taxes and motor vehicle stuff, obviously, right? And they're all networked together, you have six computers?
And driver's license.
And driver's license, too.
It's okay.
So if you're saying if you try to replace, say, two at a time, you're afraid, or they're telling you the software may not be compatible with the two new ones and the four old ones?
They're telling me because I still have Windows Seven, I could infect the rest of the network that has Windows Ten.
Infect it?
I don't know, I don't know. I'm not a technology person.
I don't know how to infect it, and it may not be compatible with it, because software don't work.
Why can't you take an old computer and update it to Windows Ten? Why can't you do that?
Yeah, you should be able to.
I think you should just call maybe one or two other independent resources with some IT knowledge and see what you can figure out, because if we just go with the company that's already servicing us, of course, they want us to do the entire, and I think you're smart for saying there might be another option.
Yeah.
Do you use Next Tech then, for the software?
I have, until my contract ends next month.
So our, um, capital improvement, Dawn, didn't we have something in there about purchasing for the courthouse equipment? I mean, that could technically, we have some available funds if we need to do that, okay.
So you're saying looking for some.
But you think that everybody's.
Possibly.
Well, she has her phone budget in here, like fourteen, fifteen. If, if everybody, if every courthouse department budgets their same telephone budget as they did last year, you think that's gonna cover the purchase of the new phones within that? Oh, great, that's great, okay.
So you may review for a different software out next, somebody besides Next Tech? And then you would deal with them on these new computers, too? Okay.
Yeah, I'm not sure, but.
So you're not sure on the, any, any guess on what the value would be for a computer?
They haven't got back to us. I think we're gonna do minis on the counter.
Okay.
And then towers on the desk.
Okay.
But no, I have not got a quote yet. We were here one, two weeks ago, Next Tech.
All right. Alright.
Haven't got anything.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Sorry to rush you off, but we're a little behind, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Services for the elder lady, mill levy. So last week, we had discussed um some of the issues and how things have kind of evolved with the mill levy money and I have actually had a couple of requests into the county attorney about details of that money as far as how it pertains to the expenses. Uh what's justifiable, et cetera, and we still haven't gotten really a report on that, so. I would say that's definitely something we need to consider going into this next budget year, you know, we're working on the budgets now and what we do have is we still have our total amount in reserve funds from last year's collection of seventy-five thousand out of the two mill. Some of the comments that I made is, I've done some comparative research with other counties and I use Ellsworth as an example because it's much bigger than us as far as population, um but the the resources that they're using are similar and for example, the distribution to the senior centers comes directly from the commission. And the board that is the council, serving as the council on aging in Ellsworth has hired someone who also does all their logistical planning for their public transportation in Ellsworth. So that being said, I've kind of called into question, what is the purpose of the LCCA serving as an employer? And I'm assuming maybe some of you are here to address that, and I'm wondering, Becky, if you had some comments?
Well, okay, so I.
You could come up front, Becky.
Yeah, please.
Please. Also, we just wanna talk to you about, you're, you're obviously now taking over the LCCA director and the, the uh senior center director, and I was wanting to know how that's going with you, because you're two tasks and the differences between them, so some of us, I may don't understand necessarily all the differences.
Well, I think that the main thing is, the goal for both the Lincoln Senior Center and the Lincoln County Council on Aging is one audience. And those are seniors. The Lincoln Senior Center solely has to do with the meals program. I'm hired from Manhattan of North Central Flynn Hills Area Agency on Aging to run the meals program. The senior center supplements my income because they only pay minimum wage. And so, and you also help with like all the expenses that come along with doing that. With the meals program, we on average touch, well, our numbers kinda went down a little bit, we're not, I think we're between fifty-five to sixty every month of meals that come in, the people who come in, I probably have on average.
Fifty-five to sixty people.
Sixty people.
Yeah, she said meals, but you know, it's meals every day, but it's for that many people.
That many people, sorry.
You have about sixty a day.
Yes, well, that's either home delivery, we have a home delivery service, we deliver to the high-rise.
Yeah.
Um, some people that live at the high-rise come and eat in, because we, and then we also have people that get carryouts. And then we also started with the help of the Lincoln County Council on Aging, meal delivery to Barnard. We're really trying to get Beverly, and I know we've always been trying to go with, to with Sylvan too, but it just hasn't worked out where.
How many are going to Barnard, still just two?
Um, three, like we have three today, I, I mean, if you've watched the obituaries, there's kinda been a lot of death there, so.
I think it was, it was like two and three last year.
At the peak time, I think we had seven, and then quite a few of those, and so we try.
Oh, sure.
And they've changed the, what they pay out for that, I think we give a donation to the lady that delivers of a hundred dollars a month. So, we both focus on seniors, but the Lincoln County Council on Aging, this is the, I did this for you. This is kind of the projects that we've done since I've started, and one of our big projects that I want to work on with you willing to let us, is senior isolation. I feel like that, I've, I've had some networking with some people that I've met, the senior companion program is something I know that I remember whenever the last director of Lincoln County Council on Aging had talked about this, and we had discussed how I thought this would be such a great idea because the people who were coming in the senior centers every day and partaking in those activities, eating those meals, those aren't the seniors that we really need to hit in this county, the ones are the ones that are at home, not getting out, maybe not having someone, family close by that checks on them. Um, so those are some of the things, and then I did add February, March, April and May, I didn't, June, it's not all the way over yet. But I did all the activities that I've done as the senior coordinator. And I know that you know in the past, this was a full paid, full-time position, forty hours a week, I am only doing this for three and a half hours a day in the afternoons. So, I mean, I'm very proud of all the information that I've learned and how I, you know, my success stories, I tell my board when I go because I'm really excited about this one lady that I've been working with for a month, she didn't turn in her, she'd never had to turn back in the paperwork from Can Care. And so she didn't, and then she lost services and lost assistance with her services, so we've been fighting for months and she got it back on and she actually got a refund, so it was like my yay, big yahoo moment of yay, this is all worth it, I feel like I'm making a difference. So. So it's kinda hard, I know that Randy always said, Randy says that to me, like, well, I just don't know the difference, well, the senior center is strictly meals.
Don't know, you see, don't you have some programs with the senior center?
The senior center, North Central Flynn Hills Area Agency on Aging makes me do two, two, seven, two nutritional programs, two educational programs and seven recreational.
During a month?
Or during a month.
Okay.
Two, two, seven, yeah.
Okay, so here's my question, if the Lincoln Senior Center is the meals program, we're using our mill levy tax to subsidize that meal program, to a certain extent, whatever the additional pay is for you, whatever the you know, I mean, we're paying the electric, the overhead, all that, for to have that meals program there, but the meals I know and the basic minimum wage is paid by the state program. Okay, so what else does Lincoln Senior Center do or output from there?
But I don't understand what you're saying, like.
Well, you're paying for you, but also, you got how many cooks, two other cooks?
No, I'm saying outside of the meal program itself, I understand that the meal program is all wrapped up.
The thing about the meals program is, which I would feel like it would be a struggle at the Sylvan Senior Center, because people come in for the meals program. And so then I automatically.
They're already there.
They're already there to do the programs. And so that's where I bring in, but I, I mean, I have to do them, but I always do way more than what I'm, my required, minimum requirement is. But that's where I had Patterson Pharmacy come in, came in and did a program that I thought was amazing on um prescription management, which I had no idea that they offered this service locally. Where it's pretty much they make pillboxes in little dispensaries, that were, you don't have to think about it, or you don't have a.
Every day sorted for you.
Yes, they come in little, they can do them in these little packages that are just like kind of a roll, or it's like, it looks like kind of like a three-ring notebook and it has all your days. And they do that for free here at Patterson Pharmacy, and she had contacted me and I was like, that sounds like a great program. And so then I contacted Shirley and told her, hey, you know, because sometimes I try to try things out on the Lincoln Senior Center and if I feel like the seniors really enjoyed that, or they really learned something from that, then I spread the word. And so I had gotten with her and emailed back with Amy from Patterson Pharmacy, and I was like, would you come to Sylvan and do this program? Because I think that they would really love this at one of their meetings, because you have no idea, and some of it, for me, I was thinking of the caregivers who that's one less thing that they have to do to take care of their loved ones, to try to keep them in the home, so.
Okay, so again, though, just back to my question, outside of the meal program, I see that you're incorporating other things because people are coming to the meal program. But what is the output of Lincoln Senior Center, I mean, I know they get donations, I know they have.
We have memorials, is that what you're talking about?
There's other money circulating there besides just the mill levy money, but what I'm seeing is all the overhead that's being expended for the Lincoln Senior Center is all dedicated to the meal program in which you're doing a great job incorporating other educational things, but that's part of your task from the North Central Flynn Hills. So what else does Lincoln Senior Center do separate, totally separate from the meal program? Is there anything, I mean, I'm not aware of anything, that's why I asked.
No, I mean, like, we do, we do fundraising, if that's what you're talking about, we did the scrapping with, yeah, we just did the scrapping with seniors where we collected, and I think. Were we over a thousand?
Yes.
I think we raised over a thousand on that, um every year we go to the city council and ask them for money and to fund something this year. Last year we did bathroom remodels, we painted and did update.
You have a comment in the back. Oh, I, I think it's important, the way I look at it, all the fundraising, all that stuff goes for the maintenance of the building.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You guys have, well, right, don't you have like a capital outlay uh account of sorts where you've been having a savings that, I think someone's mentioned that you were gonna redo the back entrance?
Well, that's.
That all goes.
That's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Yes.
Uh huh.
Right now.
I just call it capital.
Right now, we're collecting money to redo the floor and kitchen.
Yeah, yeah, any additional improvements that you wanna make, you wanna make sure you.
Yeah, we do it on our own, like fundraising and our own, well, we have.
Doesn't subsidize the meal program, other than it provides a place for it to be.
Uh huh. And that's fine, yeah, I'm, I'm only asking because in years prior, there was this big issue on what the participation meant at the senior center. And so basically, the primary participation at the senior center is for the meals program, in which they're being serviced by other things that you're bringing in. But you're also getting paid to do that because it's part of your requirement as the meals, what's the meal, what's your position?
Site manager.
Site manager, site manager, okay, so just to follow that line of thinking, when you say that the LCCA has a different purpose. I guess, anything that the LCCA would be doing out of the Lincoln Senior Center, they would also be doing potentially out of the Sylvan Senior Center. Or, or as they're doing their own individual things out of the office, let's say, at the Lincoln Senior Center. It's still a potential to do those same functions out of the other location, or out of the senior center itself. I mean, I guess, to me, there is this isolation breakdown of the LCCA needs its own phone line, needs its own office, needs to pay rent. Why wouldn't the senior centers just let the LCCA exist there in both places anytime they want?
Well, and I don't think that there was a, I don't think there was any, the Lincoln County Council on Aging, when they came to the senior center, they offered to pay rent. They, we didn't, like, I don't think you did, did you, I mean, if I remember correctly.
No, yeah, and I'm not, I'm not saying, oh, that Lincoln Senior Center is demanding rent, I, I'm, I'm suggesting if you read back into the minutes, which I read all the way back into the eighties, okay? The group that got together to be the LCCA, they had, their, their schedule was to meet at the senior centers, both of them, every other month. So one month they'd have a meeting here, one month they'd have a meeting there, one month they've had a, then they would alternate back and forth, because the, the idea was they're congregating in the place where the seniors have a hub of activity.
Well, and I don't think that's, you're opposed to any of that.
No, we're not opposed to that now.
Uh huh.
Now, twelve years ago, when our coordinator, they had a problem over there, they didn't want to come over there. Yeah, don't say no, because that's the truth. She would not go over there.
Well, we have.
Don't say when they had a problem over there, because the problem was not in Sylvan Grove.
No. Well, Sylvan Grove, they were.
Yeah.
But we just wanna clarify.
Yeah, he acknowledged it.
No, he was welcome anytime.
So, okay, all, all I'm getting at with this discussion is the circulation of the rent money, which I don't agree with, because all the money's coming from the commission, it's all taxpayer money. To ask one organization to budget rent money to pay to the other organization that's being fully subsidized by the same mill levy, to me is really one of those things that we need to.
You don't think there aren't, there aren't additional expenses at the senior center? Because we stay open another three and a half hours a day for electricity, gas.
Absolutely, but what I'm saying, what I'm.
That's why the rent, we're talking about the rent that they were willing to pay, because they're occupying a room in our facility that can't be used nowhere else, I don't know whether.
And it's, I mean, think about whenever you had a separate facility that you were paying rent and utilities.
Well, that was just a little, yeah, that was a little power trip um that happened and went awry. I totally understand what you're saying about the additional expenses for the bill, what I'm saying is, then the Lincoln Senior Center should request that in their budget. Because then, then the commission knows all that, all that you'd have to do.
Difference, whether it's.
There's a huge difference, because it, the only reason to request the rent separately for a third-party organization is to substantiate the need for its all of its own individual expenses.
Well, they have the privacy, Alexis, Becky cannot talk to somebody in front of everybody else, that, that's a HIPAA violation, she can't do that. So we have to have that office space for, for privacy.
Well, I guess what I'm suggesting is, if the LCCA was that flexible, then the person who's employed by the LCCA would be more than willing to go and meet someone at any other location. So to justify the need of a particular location with its own individual expenses, eh, that doesn't really serve everyone, that only serves.
Yeah, but I mean, I'm not saying, like, you're saying, like, for me, would I go to Sylvan, I mean, if somebody wanted to come meet with me, absolutely, if they couldn't make it over.
I actually think the LCC, LCCA should take it upon themselves to commit to serving both senior centers simultaneously.
My thing is, is the only thing is, the activities from the Lake, Sylvan Senior Center, a lot of them are during the morning, there is a one night your potluck that you have, but ideally, my first and foremost job is.
No, you're, you can't leave.
I can't leave. I have to do my, I have to do my North Central Flynn Hills.
We have a comment or a question.
I have a purely theoretical question, but if the Sylvan Senior Center was willing to host the LCCA and let them use our facilities at no expense whatsoever, using our copy or our phone line, because you're serving the Sylvan Senior Center. Would the LCCA be willing to do that?
Oh, like move the whole C, Lincoln County Council on Aging over to Sylvan?
Because it's free.
Or share it, I mean, I could see it meeting both places or, or moving to Sylvan, but to me, that council is designed to serve those centers. So I understand why they're being charged.
It's to serve those centers, it's to serve the seniors, there's people who are.
Okay, so it's to serve the seniors.
And that's where I said, the people who are going to be senior centers every day and eating the meals, those aren't the target audience for the Lincoln County Council on Aging.
I agree, the purpose of the LCCA is to serve all of the seniors who wanna be served in Lincoln County.
That's right.
But if that can be done with free, if the senior centers are willing to say, sure, use our facility, use our phone, you can use the space. To me, that would save a lot of money.
Once in a while, like, you would, not, how often, you require her to come over there two times?
What I'm saying is that I do not see why we are tripling up on these expenses. Why not let the?
Worst triple.
Worst triple.
Sylvan Center, Lincoln Center, LCCA, why don't we have the two centers paying for these things and the LCCA working within the two centers at no expense?
We have a question in the back.
No, I was just gonna say, I think right now, what the Council on Aging does is try to assume a share of the utilities. They did that as opposed to rent, because as soon as they were paying rent, then they were responsible for insurance. So they were just trying to circumvent that, assume a share of the responsibility with the utilities, which is what, a hundred dollars a month? They contribute, but the, the other thing is that there's an amazing amount of that has accumulated for the Council on Aging.
Amazing amount.
There's, there's a need for an office.
A space, you're saying storage, storage.
Because there's files upon files of documentation on.
Say that those can't be gone through over time, but right this minute.
And the physical location of the hub of operations, I understand that, I think more what's being called into question, not because of you but just because of the historical.
Divide.
Yes, a, and, and the historical um activities going on with the LCCA. There, it seems like it was always functioning as this mysterious, separate entity that was paying a full-time position to do something that was never tracked on paper, okay? So I'm not accusing you of that at all, I'm saying historically, that's the understanding, so how do we come to an agreement for the seniors that there's a purpose to the LCCA and what is that specific purpose, and you're saying right here at the table that it's to serve the people that don't come to the senior centers?
Yeah, that's, I, I mean, that's how I view it, that that's our target audience.
But can those people who don't come to the, I mean, they're not members of the senior center, they don't participate in senior center activities. Can they come to the senior center to see you, to get your service to them, is that the location that they can come to?
Well, or they can call, a lot of people just call and have questions, or I have people that don't, are not senior center participants every day and they, I've helped with a person that's getting ready to, I mean, you've seen my list, that's getting ready to retire, has a question as to where to go. You know, or I filled out this paperwork, I got this scam, what do you think about that, is this a scam, Becky, is this something real, I mean, it's been astonishing to me.
Houses would be with them personally that way or?
Well, I have never had to, I mean.
Well, they got telephones, right?
Right, yeah.
Or email or whatever.
I mean, I feel like it's.
Let me ask you this, just out of a simple idea of consolidation, is there a reason that they can't call the Lincoln Senior Center phone number instead of a separate number to the LCCA?
Um, I don't think that there's a reason why they can't, but.
And I, and I saw like a separate internet bill, I think, is that?
Well, the deal with the internet is, the, when Eagle Communications came to town with the fiber, the senior center um was one of their, they picked us, I guess. And we have.
Well, they had to have so many volunteers to wanna come through, so that counted as two to LCCA and the.
Uh, no, I don't mind, with the time, they were moving to the other buildings, so I think that's why like they were, they, they had it in their plans to move.
Like from our end of the table, from our end of the table, it's like, well, can't you share a phone line, or can't you share an internet line, or can't?
Well, I mean, yeah, I mean, I'm not saying that we can't, but on the.
Can't someone call the Sylvan Senior Center to be able to eventually get to you, I mean, I'm saying, you're not always available because you. You're not always available because you have other duties and they've hired you as just part time so that you can fill out the rest of your day.
Right.
And I think that's an efficient concept, but some of the mention of overlapping expenses. Two phone lines to the same building for the same person who is you is kind of just crazy.
I mean, I guess it's like anything, I mean, like, I mean, I.
Not if the taxpayers pay for.
Right.
Nobody's still the same thing.
No, it's not, because I'm not asking someone else to pay for it.
Wait, I, and I will ask Becky this, how busy is the senior center phone in the morning?
Super busy, super busy.
But she's supposed to be working for the Council on Aging in the morning.
No, so they call, it goes to the other phone and they leave messages and I call them the afternoon.
And they have the messages and then they.
Yeah, with one, but no, it wouldn't, because I would have Council on Aging and senior center.
People go in to order meals, right.
I probably have fifteen phone calls in the morning.
Yeah, and they're like back to back to back to back to back, and if anybody wants to talk.
So what about the internet then, can we explain the internet line?
Well, the internet's kind of a little odd right now, because the Lincoln Senior Center is still receiving free wifi and. TV service from Eagle Communications, because we were their hotspot.
As a promotional.
Yes, so we have yet to, I mean, I hope they don't hear this. I hope they don't hear it, I hope they've forgotten about us, but, so it was really hard for, whenever they were setting up the phone line for Lincoln County Council on Aging, to be like, well, do you need internet? Well, no, because we'll just use the senior centers.
Because it wasn't a legitimate expense then, but it will be.
Right, so, yeah, go ahead.
Well, I have two questions, one is, if this, if the LCCA was only open from one to three, then people would only be able to call from one to three, or there'd have to be a message.
It's actually one to four thirty.
It doesn't matter, my point is just that I still don't see why there need to be two phone lines, because a message is taken, or it goes to an answering machine, or they have to call three LCCA hours.
The other thing is, if you save some of that money with those additional expenses, it can be put towards mileage and the other programs that you're actually, I. That's where I had a question for the county attorney, you know, it's like, are all these expenses legitimate to pay for the overhead of the operation of something versus paying for the program itself? Because if you have to pay a tai chi instructor or whatever that's producing a program.
We don't have to pay it.
Well, I'm, it's a hypothetical, if if you have to pay someone to come in to do um, right, real estate, real estate retirement planning, et cetera, et cetera. Those programs that are available for the people to come in and sit in on because it's being paid for.
Right.
So, isn't it worth consolidating some of your overhead expenses to have that money available for that? Because I'll tell you right now, I really don't have an intention of upping to the two mills that it once was. We've had an increase in valuation, we've seen a decrease in expenses, and these are the kind of things that we really need to keep a clamp on, and I appreciate you doing. A lot with not as much time as was given to.
Previous.
With not very much output.
Right.
I appreciate that, I mean, it's it's refreshing, so I just.
And I, I'm not saying that, and I think we've even discussed it, the senior center, like, uh, what's, I don't even know who, everything blurs together whenever you have all these different meetings, but. Having one where you answer Lincoln County Senior Services, and then, you know, if it's somebody that calls and says, hey, I wanted to talk to you about my. This Medicare, can I call you back at one o'clock, you know?
With one phone line, can't you have?
Call it, Lincoln County Senior Services.
Yeah.
And then, you could merge it together, and we're not against the Council on Aging, or the senior center, she's, her and I, we've got this.
Because it's.
We just wanna make it simpler, I understand, and work together for everyone.
Because I think with that, consigning the phone, what, you're saving forty, I think the, the Lincoln Senior Center has a cellphone. Because a landline was astronomical, yes.
Yeah.
Well, I I just have another question, I need to clarify, I guess I don't really understand why the job of the LCCA would not be to serve senior centers, since. Seniors come to the senior centers, and the programs available to all the seniors, say in Sylvan Grove, run through the senior center. If anybody was going, even a little shut in person who wanted to come out and have a quilting adventure, it would come through the Sylvan Senior Center. So to me, the LCCA should really be supporting and promoting.
Well, I think they should support and promote, but I don't think that that, I mean, you're already providing those services as the Lincoln, at the Sylvan Senior Center, and we're already providing those as the Lincoln Senior Center, so that's even. Like, then if you're wanting, that with the Council on Aging, it seems like that's a duplication.
Well, I guess I just feel like if the Council on Aging has a paid employee, that employee could be working with the senior centers to provide those things.
And I ha, I feel like I have been.
Yeah, I believe you have.
So I think what I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is that she's.
No, with Sylvan, I've already given her a program.
Yeah, well, what, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm hearing you say that anytime Sylvan calls me up, I'm willing to do for them.
Oh, yes, I've already talked to North Central Flint Hills, area to on aging, to make for sure that Sylvan, which I'm sure you guys are on top of it, but just double check. You got Sylvan Senior Center and Lincoln Senior Center ready for open enrollment, and that's one of my big things, is I have one person who um is going to be a, I have been signed up. Paperwork stamped, ready to be a schick counselor in Lincoln County, so, so excited about that.
Thank you to hear that.
Because, I mean, I know that that was a conflict, and although sometimes I'm like, oh, man, I would love to do it, but I can't, and so I just.
I don't even think that you can't, I think it's just a matter of a time balance, you know?
I just don't know, I think that if we plan, and I said, you know, even if you could plan our days spread apart, like, say, maybe we do Sylvan in. In December or in October, and then Lincoln in November, not the two days before the ending of open enrollment like we did last time.
Right, right.
And another thing that I didn't know until this last year, whenever it was thrown on top of a, on our lap, pretty much, that April at the pharmacy, she, I think, did over forty-five. Helped with open enrollment.
Wow.
So, and just, and I would send to her, she'd be faxing, we'd work together on it, and that was somebody that I didn't even know local.
Doing or or could do and already do.
That could do it, yes, knows everything, so, it's just learning, every day I learn more, and I.
I'll just say, one of the hesitations from my end is, you can always justify more. Social programs with tax dollars, you can always justify that, because you can make a little need for this and a little need for that, I mean, I. I honestly think at one time, we were paying tax dollars to have one person's apartment cleaned, so at any given time, you can justify these additional expenses, so. I just don't wanna see us in the future, get back to the point where we build up this expense for an organization, and the next thing you know, it's not producing anything, but we're still paying right into it, and. I, it's hard, because all the board that's here now, the employee that's here now is all new, it's fresh, it sounds like it's being productive, and you have legitimized reasons and answers. That could all fall apart.
Right.
So from the commission table, we have to be restricting our expenses to make it make sense for everyone, and. I think what you're explaining, that you wanna target the people that are outside the senior centers, there's no reason that we can't encourage them to come through, through the senior center, not to it, but through it.
I mean, right, right.
Some of them can't maybe.
Well, if they're shut ins, or, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying, oh, don't pay you to go see them, but I'm just saying, there can definitely be an incorporation with. The senior center doing things that then involves other people who aren't really members.
Right.
Right.
We had a comment over here.
No.
Oh, I thought you were raising.
It's just a comfortable place to put it.
Yes, yes.
Okay, so, and you guys have the Lincoln County Council on Aging budget, that latest one?
Yes.
I made another copy if you needed it, but. And then, yeah, and then, um, I didn't make a copy of this, but I had, I watched the video, and I think one time, somebody asked for the senior services requirements, position requirements. Did you have that?
I think I've seen it a while ago, and I don't know if you. Now, I will say this, before we get ready to distribute any money, um, there is a problem with the bylaws of the LCCA, okay? The previous bylaws of the LCCA had the commission appointing the members, just like we appoint the hospital board, just like we appoint many, many boards, okay, I. Drawing a blank on all the, but there are ten different boards at least, so when the commission appoints a board, you become a quasi governmental agency. And you're really doing the bidding of the commission, which means when you bring your budget to us, we approve it, and it's pretty much supposed to be expended as such as was presented, you know?
They have to open the co, co man cora.
Well, that's what I'm getting at, if you are appoint, if the board is appointed by the commission, and I believe the qualification is, I'm I'm not sure how it's worded, but if you look it up on the, on the Attorney General's website. If your, if your income consists of a certain percentage, or or I wanna say the majority of it, but I don't know that that's true, is funded with public dollars. Then you are subject to co man cora, which is open meetings and open records, okay? Right now, the way that the LCCA is, you are not subject to open records or open meetings, and I, there's a.
I don't, when did that get changed, though?
Look at the attorney, oh, the last, the last revision of the, the last revision of the bylaws.
And the reason that was, is when Terry Finch was sitting right there, and and Alexis and Al Joe were sitting there, they didn't want to appoint people to the LCCA, we, we. Happy to come in and apply, and we can go ahead, but we still presented them to the commission to be approved.
But that's not the same thing, I mean.
Well, it is the same thing, Alexis.
Well, no, it's not, because if, because if your bylaws say that you choose your own members, then that's not valid.
But you guys wanted to do it that way.
Well, but how about you always?
I don't, I would have to listen to that conversation again to verify what you're saying.
Well, I think maybe you should.
Yeah, because I think they could, we could change it.
Yeah, you, it's it's just a matter of of having your meeting and changing the bylaws, the, I do have a concern with that, only because. One hundred percent of your funding is coming from the commission, or has been, has been, okay? In that circumstance, I really feel like you should be open records, open meetings, whether you say you will or not, it doesn't matter, because the law says. You have to be under these specific provisions.
I think you guys can review that.
Yeah, if you just change that, I don't see why there's a problem.
Yeah, I don't think.
Prior to that being done, I would say, then we're just giving money like we do to some other organizations, which I have a problem with, but they're outside of our county, where, once we give them the money. There's no way to track where that money went, they're not subject to the review, now, the senior centers have their own fundraising.
Yeah.
And they also present budgets that I think are very specific, like, this is for utilities, this is for, so we know what overhead we're paying. Um, the percentage of programs compared to the percentage of overhead, that's another topic, I guess, for maybe next year's budget, but right now, we're sitting on seventy-five thousand dollars that I believe we need to distribute. So, I'm gonna make a motion, um, I've moved to distribute the two thousand eighteen withheld.
That's already withheld.
I'm sorry, two thousand nineteen, I'm sorry, I was wrong here, two thousand and nineteen, we're budgeting for two thousand and twenty, I'm, sorry.
Yeah.
I amend the motion, please, I move to distribute the withheld two thousand and nineteen services for the elderly mill levy. Awarding each senior center their grant request, their budget request, with the remaining going to the Lincoln County Council on Aging.
How much was that, can we state? Twenty, thirty?
I was rounding it in my head when I did the math, and I think it.
Thirty-five thousand, twenty. Twenty-five thousand to Sylvan, or twenty-four, whatever.
I I, when I rounded it, it was thirty-five to Lincoln, twenty-four to Sylvan, so that would leave about.
Twenty-four, one hundred and thirty-two.
You have it?
Twenty.
One thirty-two.
Well, our budget for, here was our budget for Lincoln.
Yeah, it was forty-two, one fifty.
Um.
For nineteen.
We show your, our actual expenses, I have the profit and loss attached to it, and last year in two thousand eighteen, we only got twenty-three thousand dollars worth of mill levy money.
No, we red, we we've.
Yeah, you did it later.
We did, we did, yes, we did, yes, we did, because we had it withheld in the bank, and we then gave it.
No, we did.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yeah, we got it.
Yeah, and it took us two years to get it.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
So I apologize, the number I was using in my head was two thousand eighteen proposed budget, your proposed budget for two thousand nineteen for Lincoln, well, I'm gonna, I'm gonna leave the motion as is.
Well, I have a question. So what is the balance of the LCCA?
Do you wanna second it or?
Yeah, what is?
Well, I'm gonna discuss it first, before I second it.
Motion dies for lack of second.
On Sylvan, uh, what services do you provide, you don't have meals, what's the Sylvan Senior Center provide?
We have coffee, uh, three days a week, we have an exercise program three days a week, we have a card playing group that's coming in. And we have quilting for the ladies, and then we provided the schick program from Manhattan in October, which. They didn't think we'd have Harvey, and we ended up with thirteen ladies of people coming in, we just finished having the program for the attorney, he came in and did the.
Advanced directors?
Advanced directors, and he, and we can contact him for anybody that needs a wheel drawn up, and that's all for you.
How many, uh?
We have a monthly potluck, and often have a program with that potluck.
How many, uh?
You also have, you also host the lunch program for free, you're not charging the hospital.
How many people do you get, say, a week, or or, how many seniors come in a week, like, we have, like Becky said, for the sixty?
I was like, here's my, I did an activity calendar from January on, that shows you all the activities and all the people that came in those days, and then at the bottom, I showed you, like, how many meals were.
But I was just curious, on Sylvan, how many, uh, people average come in a week, do you all have a count?
I don't think that we've ever counted.
We, you were keeping track for a long time, because that's how the.
Well, we have a sign in sheet at the front of the building, and we have to go through that sign in sheet to see how many.
Well, I'm just saying, I'm just asking.
I would say it's about half, about half as many people, if you have fifty-five, I would say, I mean.
You have twenty-five people that come to the senior center, it's like, that's awesome, please.
A day?
A day?
No, no, not every day, not every day.
In the course of a week.
Just twenty-five different people.
But you have sixty meals a day, right?
Yeah, sixty meals a day.
You're talking three hundred.
You're talking three hundred a week, and you're talking fifty a week?
No, more than that, I mean, more than that.
But, and so.
But we have tried to.
I'm not, I'm just asking why, and I'm not against Sylvan here, but I'm asking why you want twenty-five thousand dollars, and you don't have no employees, like Lincoln does, what do you need that much money for?
Uh, we had, uh, we have a budget, we have five, five hundred.
Well, I know you're fixing up your facility, you're getting a new facility.
No, I don't have nothing to do.
Well, then, what is our budget, can I say?
I don't have it, I'm sorry, I think it's out in my van.
No, it's just, it's just, and I'm not against Sylvan here, it may sound like it, because, because Lincoln's get thirty-five thousand.
Dawn has it, Dawn has it.
Lincoln's get thirty-five thousand, they have meals, they get three hundred a week, people kinda going through there, you're asking for twenty-five thousand, two thirds of what Lincoln's getting, and you have, okay, fifty people. And you do good services, I'm not against that, but you don't have employees, you, so you're asking for a lot more money.
Yeah, volunteers.
Well, that's great, but I'm just, that's good, that's good, but I'm just saying, you're asking for a lot more money per per individual senior citizen that comes into your.
Well, first of all, we can't really say that, because we don't have a knowledge of how many come in, because we haven't tracked that.
Okay, so we give you a hundred and fifty a week, I'll raise the way up, that'd be half as much as Lincoln, but you're wanting more than.
Well, yeah, doesn't forty percent of the tax come from our end of the.
We go by, we don't go by taxes, we did that, the guy who pays fifty thousand a year as a farmer out here, we would grade his roads every day, and the guy that doesn't pay no property tax, we'd never grade, you can't go by that thinking.
I I would just like to interject a thought, though, to what you're getting at.
I'm getting at, we should serve individuals, we should base on individuals that come to a center and not on where the money comes from Sylvan.
Okay, but you're not taking into account how much tax money is being given by North Central Flint Hills to generate that program.
Right.
Because you're, we're using our county money to subsidize a program that's being brought in by the state. So, well, a region, it's not even a state, it's a state and federally combined funded thing, so what you're saying is, because that program provides meals. And it generates a lot more tra, foot traffic, you wanna allocate the money per capita, but in Sylvan, all the functions are self-induced.
Okay.
They're not generated through an exterior program that they're just subsidizing, so, I mean, I see legitimacy in it, there are only two senior centers in the whole county. You can choose to go to one or the other, if you wanna do quilting, coloring, they had exercise, things like that, I mean, you can go.
We also have concession stands that we're doing for the.
No, yeah, I'm not, I'm not putting Sylvan down, I'm gonna.
But, I mean, of all those, I mean, I I guess you're saying, and it's the same thing with us too, like, I have a lot of programs, but none of my programs cost any money. Like, when I have Patterson Pharmacy come in.
That's why the wording for the mill levy is very obscure.
I know, because it says the monies for the, it says the monies for the programs, but really, what we're doing is we're funding your overhead for your facilities.
That's right.
And so, it doesn't cost, and it, I mean, there's a difference in cost, but you're still talking about funding the electric bill, that, I mean, if that's what the budget, we can look at the budget, Dawn's gonna get it. But we're still talking about funding the overhead of the facility, not per capita funding.
Yeah, I know, I know it's gonna cost Sylvan more per capita because they have less people, that's okay.
This is our bit, uh, request for two thousand twenty.
But last year, what did you have last year for budget, like, seven thousand, wasn't it?
No, we budgeted twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two dollars, that's for two thousand twenty.
This is next, this is the next one.
Next.
I give you an idea for things for budgeting for. I do have a copy of last year's if you need it. I think the idea is that the budget should be based on, not by the head, like, how many people walk through the door, it should be based on the things that are needed to be done.
Well, that gives.
Programs offered, the.
I think you should go by service, how many people, how many people get serviced at one facility?
Okay, that's a per capita issue, you're back to the per capita issue.
Right, then you take out the meal program, and you see how many they service without the meal program.
Yeah, I mean, I, I would be the first one to tell you that. Yeah, I mean, I, I would be the first one to tell you that if we didn't have the meals program, it would be a struggle. But I don't know, I mean, I don't, I don't see your budget as to what you have that costs that much. Is that to keep your doors open, is that to, you have an employee or?
Well, just the utilities in itself is seventy-eight hundred, which they've never even received.
I don't know.
Right. Until last year, until last year, till they never.
Yeah, and that's in their, and that's in your little building, that's how much it costs, wow. I mean, I don't need to say little.
It's probably rounded, I mean, two thousand, maybe it's, I don't know.
That's a little higher because.
My rounded out for the new building.
Oh, yes, oh, yeah, that makes sense, I'm sorry, so, we still need to see Dawn's budget.
She has it, yeah.
I noticed, I'm gonna ask a question.
Uh-huh.
They have a building fund of five thousand dollars down here on their, on their expenses.
Mm-hmm.
On their budget? Can you donate mill levy money for that?
The mill levy money has been used every year on those buildings, both of them, Lincoln and Sylvan.
Lincoln's done all kinds of things to see.
Oh, yes, absolutely, because actually, Lincoln Senior Center, Lincoln Senior Center has put in grant requests through the LCCA to get the money to purchase refrigerators and stuff.
That's right, that's exactly right.
Yeah, but that's not, that's for operation, not the building.
It's not for building.
That's not the wall.
No, I'm saying that.
They never asked for money for the building.
Never.
You get it one time.
They have fundraisers, I think that's true.
There was one time when the Lincoln County Council on Aging came to us because they had an excess of money that they wanted us, if there was a special project that we wanted to do that had to do with our building, that they would help us, we had to do that.
Okay, but, but see, now you're justifying it, you're justifying it because it's the same mill levy that we tax for.
But that was the only time, and that was our wall, seven hundred dollars, that railing.
When I was on the LCCA board, we voted for that, to pay for roping at the senior center in Lincoln. We paid for.
A roof?
Air conditioning and, yes, I was on the board and I knew I voted.
I don't know.
Uh, this, the roping, and then we also had, uh, air conditioning and heating system put in because you guys were needing it really bad and we voted on the LCCA to put that in.
Well, and I don't believe that the Sylvan Senior Center has ever requested funds from the LCCA for refrigerators and stuff like that.
No.
For sewing machines, computers, what's the difference?
Well, did they give money for sewing machines? I didn't know that.
Yeah, I guess we did, you were.
This time, just recently.
Yeah, give them money for that, uh, sewing machines.
Okay, so then Lincoln Senior Center got a roof, I mean, we can, we can do that all day back and forth.
You're gonna justify one thing and not the other, that's why I can't understand.
That's why I just said to you, I just said to you, Lincoln Senior Center got a roof, Sylvan Senior Center has a, a building request. We can, right, right, right.
Yeah, I think it's like.
This all, but this all comes back to me asking the county attorney what that wording means. Are we funding services? Because if we're, I'll tell you something, if we're funding services with next year's collection, because we've already, I feel like we need to distribute what's in the bank, okay? And LCCA has twenty-five thousand dollars in the bank, so I don't see why we need to fund them at all, but the point.
They got fifteen thousand, why, why would you fund them at all, in, in a building account?
Because they don't, they're.
That money we cannot touch until December.
Well, I think I calculated it's like a two hundred dollar fee or something if you pull it out early, but the point is that for next year going on, we need to decide what are we funding, are we funding services only because like you said, a lot of them are free? So, that's an issue to me, are, are any overhead, if not, then we don't even really need the senior so, mill levy money because it's been funding the overhead and the buildings in the past many times over. So, do we continue doing that, funding the facilities that are housing the senior centers and the operations of the LCCA? Or do we just say no, it's all for programs, let them do their own fundraising or ask for other grants to sustain their facility? And then if, when you wanna pay someone to come in to put on a big fancy program, that's what we use the mill levy money for. It's gotta be one or, one or the other, and that's why I'm confused about the program wording, you know, a program is not an electric bill.
Right.
But I'm, I'm not opposed to funding the facilities.
I, I'm thinking back last year, and that, you're exactly right, because we were paying rent for a building that we shouldn't have had.
Yeah.
So, it's the same thing.
Yeah, yeah.
That's, you think about it, how, how to turn that around, that's exactly right, so.
Yeah, and I apologize, I didn't know senior got, senior, Sylvan got money for the sewing machines, that's great. Um, I mean, but there you go, there's a program, so is that a program or is it not a program? Sewing program, do you buy the, do you know what I mean, it's.
We need to get past a path and let's move forward, that's to the proper thing.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it, everything we do in Sylvan and Lincoln, the seniors.
What I'm saying is for a two hundred dollar fee to dissolve your CD because you have twenty-five thousand dollars in the bank, you have two years operating costs right there. So, why would we not fund the senior centers?
We have thirty-eight thousand for two years.
I have a comment in the back, she has some clarification.
I would just say, as part of this discussion, I think people need to decide what's inappropriate reserve. I was always taught six months of expenses is inappropriate reserve, decide, but, and decide for everybody, then.
Well, that really affects the Lincoln Senior Center though, because they have more than a year's worth of reserve.
No, I would disagree.
Yeah.
Oh, no.
I thought you said you had eighty thousand dollars in your savings.
Oh, no.
Hell no.
We have like fifteen.
Now, I got ten thousand dollars in the money mark for the rest of the year.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay, I didn't know that.
Yeah, I got ten thousand dollars, and that's why I got a question.
But are you counting your fund where you get the donations put into?
Like our.
That's only used for the building, we don't use that for operation.
So, well, that's a whole nother discussion, can you put your money in the savings for the operation or can you put your money in the savings for the building and then count on a.
But that was fundraised for the building.
Yeah, that, and some of that is, um, memorial money, that all goes into that fund. And our fundraiser for our floor fund, that all goes into that fund.
I'm not against having a savings account, I'm just saying, when it's the LCCA having a savings account, that's a little different than the senior centers because they're not supporting a facility.
Ryan, you got another comment here?
Yes, I was gonna call it, a question, okay, since everybody's so much against funding, like, if we ask for, get a grant from the LCCA to pay for a refrigerator. Okay, then do we need to increase our budget for equipment, repair?
Capital outlay.
A capital outlay, so next year in two thousand twenty, we need to put more five thousand dollars in our budget for capital outlay to increase our budget by that amount?
I think it's more appropriate to distribute money according to that organization, knowing where the money's coming from. If you're saying that you're gonna get a grant from the LCCA, which we are also funding, it, it just makes it look convoluted as to how you're getting your money. So, yes, I mean, I would, I would rather see this much capital outlay, not, well, we only need this much to operate, but then we're gonna go get money from the LCCA because they get money from you too. It, it's kind of a, it creates a sticky. Yeah.
Yeah, but you know as well as we do, that, that ninety thousand dollars that was in that account was for two years' operation for the coordinator. It wasn't for the seniors, so, so, the commission said spend that money down, so we've been spending that money down, we have seventeen thousand, some odd dollars left in the account, that just barely covers the, our budget for this coming year is nineteen thousand something, I don't know what's left over that you're, you're trying to give out.
But what you're saying is right now, in your account, you have enough money to get through the end of the year and in December.
Here's our treasure right here, she can tell me.
Well, I didn't bring anything with me, um, we have.
Eleven thousand, we have eleven thousand.
That's what I was gonna say, it's less than that.
It's eleven thousand.
Okay, okay, but you have twenty-five thousand available if you don't wanna pay the two hundred dollar fee to pull that out in December, it's available in December.
Now, see.
And we're thinking of, you know, cashing that out and that will be used for the next year's.
To make the budget.
We want, our budget won't be.
It's high next year.
It's high.
And I understand, we're here.
They, they even won't have to have a budget.
We have, we have eleven thousand dollars.
Ask for money.
Best for men clubs to ask for thirty-five hundred for doors, we told them we'd give them that money, now that's, that comes down to eight thousand. So, see, we're, we're operating on almost zero right now on the LCCA. We don't wanna cash that twenty-five thousand down until December, then that money can go wherever.
I have a question, um, I'd be interested to know how you spent it down because I'm sure if Sylvan Robyn knew you were spending it down, we would have asked for a grant.
That's a good question.
Because we never knew that you were trying to get rid of it and we sure could have used it. I think they gave you that contribution out of the original spend down.
Yeah, and they didn't get a second.
Because we gave you over four thousand dollars.
But that was, I think that was the money that was asked to be owed from what they didn't get.
But they paid out.
And deny what the savings account was, I see what you're saying.
That's how we helped.
So, what do you do now? We're gonna get twenty-five thousand dollars, so, thirty-five thousand.
Well, actually, I'm, actually, I'm glad my motion died because I really should not move to distribute money to the LCCA till you change your bylaws. That, I kinda skipped over that, but I, I really, I kinda felt like maybe you guys decided you would do that, but really, we should.
I think that you will, you said that.
We should.
I think that's on the agenda for this next meeting.
We should make sure that it creates a coma and cora compliance.
That needs to be done.
Because you're, if, if you're being given your funding based on just a grant out of the mill levy and you're not doing any fundraising, then it should be open records and open meetings.
But you did respond to the quarterly question.
Yes, I have.
And I appreciate that, and I know you're gonna be compliant, but to me, on paperwork, it's more important than.
No, I, I agree, yeah, I didn't know that it was, I guess I didn't know that it had changed in a way that we weren't compliant, so.
Well, the bylaws have changed many times over the last five years, let's say.
Uh, yeah, yeah.
Every time a new issue came out, there was a special stipulation.
There's so many revised, I don't even know, so.
There was a lawyer that came to talk to us one time and he said, if somebody starts changing bylaws, there's a problem.
Yeah.
Yes, and, and the LCCA.
That one got changed a lot.
Exactly.
And I said it to him, you don't need to be changing your bylaws.
Right, right.
Because you're creating a problem and it does.
And the LCCA actually has spent quite a bit of our mill levy money on attorneys, you know, so.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Well, then, Randy, what would you like to do? Because I do think we should wait to distribute to the LCCA until they change them, which can happen at your next meeting.
Right, Tuesday, Tuesday.
But you're gonna distribute funds to Sylvan and you're gonna distribute, distribute money to Lincoln, but you're not gonna give the LCCA money theirs, with their money, right? Which is not.
No, we'll, we'll give, we'll give it.
Well, I, I'm saying, I'm saying the bylaws.
Well, according to the numbers that I just.
Well, they could be the same way they have been for, for years, if that's what you want, I mean, Dawn had to sell the bylaws that was, we turned in for the last ten years.
What, what are you?
Don't ever, don't let the bylaws be changed then, but the bylaws were changed every January, every time somebody new came in, the bylaws were changed, and that was wrong.
Well, they were changed more often than that.
Yeah, I mean, they were using a lot of mill levy funds for attorney fees, thousands of dollars.
Well, case it was, we weren't.
I know, I, it's not the same board, it's not the same board, we know that, but you don't wanna make the same mistakes.
Absolutely not.
Right.
I think what Alexis is just saying is that until it's in writing that the bylaws say that, that you're an entity of this commission, as you were before, then that money shouldn't be distributed because it wouldn't be subject to.
I'll give you an example, the county hospital, we give just over half a million dollars out of the county funds to operate. But it's a seven-ish million dollar budget, okay, so that's not nearly a fourteen, a fourteenth of the budget, right? If I just do a little bit of math, so, because the board, the hospital board is appointed by the commission, they have to open all their books. How much doctors get paid, how much nurses get paid, what their utilities are, what they've spent, what they've earned. Now, if the commission was not appointing that board, they wouldn't have to reveal any of that financial information, so it's a very key tool.
If they were elected, like school board.
I, I, that would be, yeah.
Well, that's how it is, yeah, if they're elected school board budget, we don't get to audit or review, we could maybe, but they're, they're elected people, the school board, uh, is, so they're, they're.
I'm not sure if the election triggers a coma or not, I would have to look at that.
School board's elected, right?
But, but they might be subject to coma as well.
I don't know.
But they're definitely a.
Well, they, they're subject to that, but we have oversight of the hospital because we appoint them, that's the difference.
Right, 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 yes, yes.
We can, we can improve their budget where we can't improve the school board.
Right, all we could do if it was an elected board is withhold their subsidy, so, anyhow, I just think it's important.
But what you're saying, the LCCA is gonna get fifteen thousand dollars, right?
Well, if, actually, if both senior centers got, I didn't realize that it was, the senior, the Lincoln Senior Center budget jumped from thirty-five to forty-two, thirty-six to forty-two, one fifty.
Our eighteen expenses are thirty-nine thousand, so increased.
I understand, yeah, yeah, you, you ended up overspending or having to pull out some of your money, so.
Yeah.
So, I didn't do the math correctly because I was rounding according to the request from, okay, so, it's forty-two, one fifty, twenty-four, one thirty-two, comes out to sixty-six, two eighty-two. Out of seventy-five leaves nine thousand. That leaves nine thousand dollars left over, if seniors, if the senior centers get their budgets approved, so.
My understanding is those budgets were all approved last July.
No.
Well, you can't approve more than what you have to spend and we only had seventy-five thousand, so we did not necessarily give a, a breakdown, that's what we're doing right now.
And back in July, we didn't really have all, we had a guest of it of our money that we had spent, but not for sure.
Well, is the senior center budget getting funded totally more important than the council on Asian budget?
I don't know, that's your decision.
Yeah, but what, would, you were operating it right now, you're.
I mean, I, I have strong feelings towards both of them.
Yeah, but where would you leave the funds as most severe?
Well, there's twenty-five thousand in a CD that's dissolvable in December for the LCCA, that's two years operating expenses almost.
But they don't wanna.
Their budget's like, their budget's twenty thousand, so that's really only one year.
You have seven in the bank, you have eleven in the bank, you have two years in the bank right now, eleven and, eleven and.
We're gonna get thirty-five hundred dollars to the best for men's club, that puts us down to eight.
Okay, so you have eight and twenty-five.
We have thirty, twenty-five, thirty-five.
Eight plus twenty-five is thirty-two.
Thirty-three thousand, thirty thousand, our budget, our budget is nineteen thousand something for next year, which, which you've already got the money for. Disperse the funds and, and let's go on for next year.
No, no, your budget that you just turned in, wait a minute, excuse me.
Nineteen thousand something.
It's twenty-one.
That's for budget year twenty-twenty, we haven't even.
No, I think that's still, it's still two thousand, that's nineteen. Cause we've been.
I'm telling them to come back.
Cause we've been.
You told us to come back.
Oh, nineteen, okay, I'm sorry, okay.
Well, we don't have, we only so much money going around here.
I think if I were, if I were commissioner, I would cut that seventy-five thousand dollars down lower and it would make it lower for all three of these groups. And, uh, you'd have to use what you got and you'd have to find other ways to get the money, which you have, you've done. I think it's a, it's a bad position to put the commissioners in a situation where they have to, uh, serve the elderly like this. When you look across the countryside, there are roads that you can't even get to the senior center if you wanted to, you'd be late getting there for dinner. So, what is more important? Just what is more important for the county?
Well, I think that's a, that is a conversation for next year, this mill levy's already been appropriated for seniors, so it kinda has to go to the seniors.
Yeah, we have this, basically today's discussion, we have the seventy-five thousand in our funds from last year. We can't take that money and spend it on something else because it was a publicly instituted collection.
You don't have, you don't have to have seventy-five thousand next year though.
Correct, that's correct, we have not set a budget for.
Well, what was the original, most of you were gonna make, what, thirty-five, twenty-five and fifteen?
Yes, but the thirty-five doesn't cover the forty-two requested by the Lincoln Senior Center because I, well, I didn't make a motion with numbers, I just said to fulfill their budget request. So, that comes out to sixty-six thousand, two hundred and eighty-two and leaves nine in the bank.
And not only, nine wouldn't be enough for you to operate right now or are you, would you have enough funds to make it to, uh, December?
They have eleven in the bank, they're gonna spend it down to eight.
We can't get, we can't get thirty-five hundred dollars to best for them, you can't do that.
Well, that doesn't mean that they have to wait till December to get the rest of the money, they have eight in the bank.
And if they got nine.
Eight and nine is seventeen.
Of seventeen, do you think that'll get you through the end of the year till, or just till December?
Well, your whole year's budget's only twenty.
That should.
As long as you also.
That's more than.
I think it should.
And also, you could pull that CD early, you may lose a little interest, but.
It's like two hundred dollars.
That would get us by the end of the year.
Yeah, I think it would, yeah.
With the twenty-five and the, and the nine and, and the eight we have, that, that would get the LCCA. Well, I was thinking thirty.
Two thousand twenty, exactly.
So, you'd like to be totally funded then, so let's totally fund the, let's totally fund the, uh, senior centers and the rest left over goes to, uh, Lincoln LCCA, okay, Alexis?
I would make dollar amounts specifically.
Okay.
Okay, sure, I have them right here, I have them right here, yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
I moved.
Lower amount.
I moved to disperse the two thousand nineteen service for the, services for the elderly mill levy to the Lincoln Senior Center in the amount of forty-two thousand, one hundred and fifty, to the Sylvan Senior Center in the amount of twenty-four thousand, one hundred and thirty-two. And to the Lincoln County Council on Aging. Oh, did I do the dollar amount? Oh, did I do the dollar amount?
What's the leftover amount there?
Oh, I, hold on, I have to do the actual, I didn't do the change, yeah, will you use that?
What was Lincoln Senior Center?
Tw- forty-two, one fifty, plus twenty-four, one thirty-two, sixty-six, two eighty-two.
Sixty-six, two eighty.
Sixty-six, sixty-six, one fifty, I have.
No, it's four, forty-two, one fifty, plus twenty-four, one thirty-two.
Oh, I didn't know.
Sixty-six.
Forty-two, one fifty?
I have the.
Eight thousand, seven, one, eight.
Eight, seven, one, eight?
Yeah.
Okay, with the remaining eight, seven, one, eight, to be dispersed to, or to the LCCA in the amount of eight, seven, one, eight, upon their bylaw change of commission appointment to the board.
Got it?
Yes.
I'll second.
Has been moved and seconded for the three dispersments, are there any further questions?
Just to clarify, cause Bob and I've been arguing, and I love you dearly. They were disputing that we have five thousand dollars in twenty-twenty budget for our building, and our new building, and we just have it under expenses, and so the question I have is, we're not allowed, or are we allowed to use any of the mill levy money towards the expenses of our new building?
Could I address that after I call for a vote, because that's not for this budget?
That's next year.
So, I'll, I'll address that, is there any further discussion? I just wanted to say I put the stipulation on there to hope that you just change your bylaws, and then we'll cut you the check, and that way it's said and done, okay? If there's no further discussion, those in favor, vote aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion carries. Now, for the, for the following year, I would still like to have the discussion with the county attorney, and really clarify, what are we going to do? Because, in my opinion, what we just did was clear up a whole decade of a mess.
Right.
You know, get the money out there to the places that use it, you've, in, on the LCCA, you have now got that savings account from a hundred thousand down to twenty-five, doing various things. We can establish a policy where we expect that you'd hold no more than six months in your reserves, something of that nature, you know? If by the end of the year you have a whole year's budget worth, well, then maybe we can cut by that six months' worth, I mean, we have to establish.
But you know, we're just in this early process of repairing this building, we've hired a contractor to do the roof, which is money out of our savings account, has nothing to do with mill levy, all the money that we have in our project account has come from our fundraising for the calendar, for the, and donations to it. And, and at this point in time, we're not counting on using any of that mill levy money, but we wanted to know.
So here's the short answer, just as, um, Mr. Segman asked about capital outlay, that's what that is, in my opinion. If you, if you budget for capital outlay, whatever that dollar amount is, you know that you're going to be using it for unforeseen expenses, improvements, additions, et cetera.
Then we'd almost have to make a change in the budget we have now, I do have two thousand dollars in our capital outlay, but it would have to be.
You just have it labeled that way, I was, he was saying, he was saying, well, if we know we're gonna need a refrigerator, do we not budget for it? And then ask the LCCA, or do we just budget? And I think that the LCCA becoming a money dispersment center is what it did before, and that was just a mess. It doesn't need to be a dispersment leg, so to speak, I mean, the commission can do that, it's a matter of emotion, so.
I, I just wanted to make sure that you were aware that we were needing clarification of what we can do for mill levy money.
And I'm, I'm seeking that cl-, that same clarification, I know the commission has control of that ultimately, but I still want some input.
Hey, what are you, you guys, you can work, you know, to help support, you know, senior centers.
No, you have to move.
She, I talked to her about it.
Well, we talked about that, Randy, at our last meeting, and we have put five thousand dollars in our budget, but we want the choice of who we hire for a director, and how we work with her, because we don't, that, a lot of people don't know her. And they need, she needs to come to the senior center, and they're, they're a picky group, and it takes a little bit to work around the block to get them to do what you want.
I'll let you guys figure that out.
Right, great.
But we are in that discussion.
That's your stuff.
Thank you.
Thanks.
We really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna come, I'm gonna come visit Sylvan these days.
I would love it, we want, we want you there.
And I want a cup of coffee, too.
How about a coffee?
Hi, Shirley begs you to come over.
I'll just jump in. Keep joking.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you all for the discussion.
Yeah, thanks for the discussion, we're still, uh.
This week, least we got them in a year.
Thanks, Clem.
Yeah.
Maybe you're squealing today, you're fired up today, like that giraffe, huh? I guess Mr. Steiner, you, Steve, are you ready to come up?
Sorry, we're running a few minutes behind, but we're pretty close, close enough.
Was this one either for you or?
That is for you, wait, that's for you, there's one here for me.
Too much pain.
Yeah, I think to take the budgets back.
Okay.
I have, you should have copies someplace, but if not, I can make you copies, but.
What, I don't know, which ones, does everyone?
Did you get the treasurer's budget?
No.
Here's this, yeah, I'll give you mine.
We need that.
Oh, yes, I got the treasurer's budget, yeah.
Did you get the Sylvan twenty-twenty?
Um, yes, I got Sylvan twenty-twenty, somebody laid it back there.
Oh, may I look at the Sylvan nineteen?
And, yeah. And then, I don't know what Becky gave you guys about things that she does, but can I get the coffee really quick?
Yeah, I think she gave me that.
And then, I'll make sure I get that.
Sure, thanks. All right, Mr. Steve, we don't have a, we're not in exactly possession when you bring it up. Oh, okay.
It's hot? After lis-, after listening to all the, all that, I thought, okay, give the money out, we'll go through this year, next year.
Put stipulations on it.
Revamp the budgets to be more reflective of what.
Is needed.
What's needed, yeah.
Don't just take a chunk of money out there and divvy it out.
Well, that's what's been happening.
And, and I'm kinda like you, I'm like twenty-four thousand percent, I wanna see them get their money, but what are they gonna spend it on?
Well, that.
I'm gonna pipe in, just because this is my district, and I've been involved in the senior center there. They have gone almost a decade with minimal, minimal funding, I'm talking thirty-five hundred dollars. While we're giving thirty thousand to Lincoln, so is there really ten times the need? I don't know, but there is a little bit of a justification in my mind, that there was so much money given to the LCCA that never made it to the Sylvan Senior Center, and we never did force the LCCA, they have that twenty-five thousand in the bank right now, we could've said, hey, we're not gonna fund Sylvan, we already collected that money years ago, and it's been sitting in the LCCA, make them pay Sylvan, but we really can't. We could've said, we're not giving you your new money until you do that, but I felt like, since we had the seventy-five collected from last year, we just split it up those ways.
Split it up, and then next year start.
That's easy, I think that was the best thing to do today.
Well, and I can pick apart the Sylvan budget, I mean, there, there are lots of things you could say, nope, 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 but this year, I think going forward, they have to know the expectations, instead of just, it's always a free-for-all, begging for your money.
They're also getting a new building, and they're wanting that as a backup to help. Not like we talked capital outlay or fixing a building, is the money really, should I go for, for facility, or just for services? Well, I think it should go for both, maybe, but maybe more services than facility, but, but, but that's one thing, they wanted that to back them up, and I, I understand that, so.
I'm not against funding facilities, but I think it needs to be clarified, because we're actually spending more money on electric bills, gas bills, and overhead expenses than services themselves. Because if you call the meal program a service, which you still are supposed to pay when you go, so is that, I mean, it's a sub-, it's a lunch subsidy, is what it is. You know, are, are we really, we're probably spending much less money for that, cause we're just paying three dollars an hour for three people, so we're paying nine dollars an hour, it's not even forty, forty hours, and then we're paying for like the phone, maybe you could justify the phone line and a couple expenses for that, but all the other overhead is just for that building to exist. So, we either fund these buildings, or we don't, or we expect them to fundraise to pay their own way.
Well, we may have to help on a subsidize, we want services probably early, I think, but you, you gotta be common sense here. They, facility, they don't have the money probably to fix, you know how expensive it is to fix facilities, so we can help support that when need be, maybe not all the time.
It occurred, it occurred to me that going into the future, there's no reason we can't say, give us your budget, and, I mean, you don't wanna do the same thing every year, because then you could calculate against it, but now that we have their budgets, we could say, hey, we're gonna fund them at seventy percent. They'll have to come up with the other thirty percent that they want, and that reduces the overall tax for providing those two buildings, because everybody's getting taxed to provide the senior center, whether you use it or not.
Yeah. That's true.
And in Hunter's case, and some of the others around, Hunter serves meals, and, and they have money, funding from, comes from higher up down to them, but at the end of the year, when they have excess money, they usually send it back to Boy.
To the county.
To the county, Tipton, they send their money to the school, the Prokial School in town, they give their excess money. I know a year ago, they sent three thousand dollars back to Boy.
Now, the only problem with that is, since we collect it, being a senior service, because the public voted it in, we, the commission gives out money out of the general fund to different organizations, which we do at will, when we actually tax according to a public vote, we'd have to give it to a senior organization, you know, I'm just saying, there's a few differences probably, if we're not doing it out of the general fund. But I will say, for the last three years, we've only budgeted seventy-five, and saved the county twenty-five to thirty-five thousand of what could be taxed, because this, this, uh, I'm gonna call it a statute, the resolution says up to two, up to one, and up to a half, and up to a half, so we don't have to tax any for it. We could tax five dollars, or zero, or, you know, it's just up two, but I'm proud of the commission for not having used the total two mills, because it's really not necessary, I mean, there's a lot of money floating around for those two buildings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
What's, what are you up here for? You're going another new road, dude?
Yeah, I do, I want, I want my road finished, that's what I want.
Oh, okay, what's wrong with it?
Well, they grabbled it with clay, it is so slick, you can't stay on it, you get a half inch rain, and you're in a ditch. They started putting sand on, but.
They did put sand on?
On part of it, they started.
Are we on Fiftieth or Union?
On Forty-fifth, they started, they started at Shaun's driveway, come down around, but before they got to Fifty, Fiftieth, they ran out of time and sand, and they quit.
Did that help, that sand?
That sand made it.
Make it, yeah, binds it up, and that's what I.
With that little hill right there, where they stopped about a hundred yards short of Fiftieth, you can't stay on that thing.
You requesting more sand, then?
Well, they kinda indicated to me he was gonna sand it, but.
How long ago was that?
Uh, two weeks ago, we spoke with him, and he said, I'll be there, we'll start doing it again next week, which was last week.
Well.
Okay, so you're just concerned about the timeframe?
Yeah, that's why I'm here this week, is cause he told me last week.
Okay.
There was Wednesday, Thursday, when the roads were.
So they're, they're sanded it, and you want more sand to complete the job?
I want, I want to sand the complete.
And how much ha-, is ha-, is it halfway down to your house, or to your, to your lodge?
No, no, I need to go quite ways further.
He's saying they haven't made it to Fiftieth yet, so from that little offshoot of Forty-fifth, they still have to go.
They haven't got that, they haven't got that half mile around.
There's, okay, well.
A little more than a quarter of a mile, by three eighths.
Which, how did the sand work, is my question?
The sand is.
It helped a lot.
It helped a lot, yeah.
Is it binding with the, cause that, that is.
I think so, time they grade it.
That's the zacco pit.
Yeah, oh, I know, that's it.
Yeah.
And I claim, that's why I kept telling sand, cause sand binds with that clay, I know you want rock, rock's ideal, but rock costs a lot, for eight, nine bucks each ton for quartzite, which we do all the time, but that's where the expense is, if we could just use that sand pit with this clay, that's cheaper.
But Norm McGee, you know, they put some of that clay stuff on her road, and it was a mess, and they did come back, and they put roadstone on.
Yeah.
Her road, and they also did ride dry their south, uh, Michael's up that hill, not that long ago, so.
Yeah, that's, well, that rock is what you, I do, but if you, can you just get by with sand, or you want rock too?
Well, I want the best I can get, is what I want.
Well, obviously.
Randy, you opened yourself up for that.
How about concrete, how about, tell you what?
Actually, actually, I was gonna say, why don't you give me my five thousand dollars back, and I'll buy rock, help put on my road too, when you get done, and so.
Well, I think we'll do that, but we, we, we made a deal on that.
I didn't expect you to, but, or they're dragging their feet, I thought there ought to be a penalty.
Well, I don't, I, I haven't, we haven't seen, uh, Mr. O'Hare today, so I don't know what they're working on, but I'm expecting that they have a, a goal to finish the sand issue.
Hopefully, the, the weather's good now, it's dry enough.
Which is a good experience, I mean, maybe they're learning by the sand application, that that's the way to fix some of this issue.
You know, and I've mentioned that before, Mitchell County, when they gravel routinely, they plant absurd sand with the gravel.
Well, should be, we have too much clay, and actually, I talked to a lot of other counties, they say clay is what you want, they don't have clay a lot of places. Clay's good, but we don't want eighty percent clay, we want about thirty percent clay, thirty percent rock, thirty percent sand, then you got a good road, I know we don't always have that mix. But, no, but we do have the clay, well, we need the sand.
There's also.
Ninety-nine percent clay.
Yeah, well, there you go, yeah, ninety-eight.
And there's a technique to blending it too, I think sometimes you get this little strata, where you get the gunk on the bottom, then we come in and sprinkle on some, some rock from quartzite, then we come on maybe with some clay or not, and that doesn't create a mix, because you're just layering it, and so therefore you get, it squished down, and then eventually, when it gets hardened, the bigger rock and the pieces that can blow away and roll into the ditch are gone forever, so you're still left with mush to, to create ruts, and then they just fold in the shoulders on top of that, and it goes down, and down, down, yeah.
But anyway, so. Basically, you just ask Mr. O'Hare, when he's gonna, when he's gonna finish.
We could ask Mr. O'Hare.
Sand in Fiftieth and Forty-fifth, but, cause it needs it, I mean.
Send more sand out there to finish the job up to here.
Did they put any on, I didn't go up there, since it was bad, it was bad when I was up there, the, the entrance to Union from, from one eighty-one.
It's still, it's still usually on.
Did they put any sand on Union, not, not yet?
They have, but.
They did?
They dumped some, but that, that little.
Right there at the entrance?
Yeah, it's been kinda a mess the whole time.
Well, that's a low area in water, it gets muddy there.
Yeah, so.
Well, we could, I could call him, please, ask him to finish your, that road of, that was your.
The bad thing about it is, you know, that you guys bought gravel, you got a lot of clay, and you've spent, you've, you've done the road, but now you're having to come back and redo the road, so it's been a double cost to you guys.
We've been doing that all spring for us, since I've been on commission, because our, I don't, I don't know if our, we don't have pits in the county with better material, or maybe not, maybe they're on clay. And I thought, I don't know if that's the case.
I'm still questioning the idea of a screen sifter, because what we were told by Mr. Yost, who is our contracted engineer, or, yes, and so on there right now, basically, he was saying that if you have a screen sifter on site, then you have all these extra OSHA standards and federal regulations, and you become a, a plant.
Quarry.
Yes, so then you have all these things that we cannot comply with, that, I, I wondered about that, I don't know the details.
That would should be better, wouldn't it, then we could make our own.
On site, we could say, okay, we don't want.
We could bring the sand in, bring the sand in, mix it with the clay, maybe even get roadstone rock, mix it all together, have a nice.
If we know we had a pit where there was a long-term goal there, if someone would sign a three-year lease, if we knew there was a lot of gravel there, there's no, there's no double charge in going ahead and hauling quartzite rock and sand to that location, and making your mix there, even if it's a few miles extra to your location where you're dropping it, it's a justified expense, cause you're not having to go back and do it all over again next year.
We could almost have our own, uh, mixing plant, or quarry.
Well, that's, that's what's, that's what's in question, how much detail is there in compliance with that?
Well, yeah, that's a good question, because our materials now, uh, this clay stuff, it's almost seems like all the pits in that way, down South Ryland's too, Westfall, they have the same problems, clay, uh, so, it seems like there's no good gravel pits anymore, or at least they're, at least we don't have, and the county doesn't seem to have good quality anymore.
We had a, we had a location, I've asked them to come look at, but they've never.
You have, you have a pit you would lease to us, no?
Well, I don't know, we need to look and see how good gravel is.
Can you do a dig up, core sample, and tell us?
We have, we have with our little, we have a little trencher ditch which, and it only digs about six, seven foot deep. It's got a lot of gravel in it.
Well, we're looking for new sources of good gravel, a lot of times, so if you can find it, tell us, because, uh.
Lex is promising.
Alexis and I are tired, we've seen this, where you put the clay out, the customers, like Mr., like Harold, Howard, or Harold, uh, Hall, and, uh, and, uh, then they're complaining, Union Drive was bad, then we have to go back with sand, and the roadstone, and, uh, it's a double, we do a double deal.
Oh, I know.
And so that's expensive.
That's just what's.
I don't know, they could go to quartzite to begin with, and then just get, they got it gravel already, graded, K dot graded levels of gravel, but now that's expensive, very expensive, so it's not really feasible to do it that way, but it's, they could do it, though, I wish we could too.
You know, when I looked at Norm McGee's road, and it's your house, it's probably a quarter mile from Union Drive, instead of putting that clay, that gravel on there that they did, that was slimy, then they had to come back, put roadstone, and they just went to quartzite, probably four semi-load, if I could get a hundred yards out of a semi-load, four semi-loads at four hundred dollars a load, would've been sixteen hundred dollars. You know, it'd been way cheaper just to put something good on right from the start.
Well, one of the concerns I had when I first got on, uh, the commission was, we were in the middle of dropping eighty thousand dollars to crush that concrete, and, and have it sifted for metal, but truth be told, it served a purpose, I don't know that it served an eighty thousand dollar purpose, but it has served a purpose, because it's been a good, um, material to put in some of these low spots that are always wet, too much clay, oh, dirt road that we're not gonna gravel, you know, they've put some stuff in there from the concrete pile, so that's worked, it was brought to my attention that, um, you could possibly get some road material, like they call it asphalt millings, right?
Yeah, millings, well, that whole big pile by I seventy at Westfall Road.
Well, is that for sale? Well, is that for sale?
I think it is. Michael one time was looking to buy that for it.
And I know that someone was very upset because they said that we had all those asphalt millings piled up at one, on one eighty-one at the intersection of eighteen and and Ellsworth County came in and bought nearly all of that.
Ellsworth and Russell, they come in and bought it all, all the way.
Well, yeah, I've heard, but maybe we could do.
And see, we have to look more lo- I think the budgeting that's been done for the highway department hasn't been anything long-term except for those equipment purchases that they were budgeting, because the material purchases have not been long-term. If we had thought about what's it gonna cost to pay triple for asphalt millings, but we only have to go back there once every three years. Then you're not going, doing the same route.
We're not doing this clay gravel with with sand on it and rock on it because it's no good and then we got a bunch of uh, citizens who are upset with us because the roads suck.
Okay, there's the road that goes from Vesper South to the interstate. Helby has a section right there, there's asphalt millings, big pile right there.
Who owns that?
I don't know, I was gonna ask Danny one day.
Right there by that uh, that gas station or?
Yeah.
Yeah, where Helby lives, right there?
No.
On fourteen?
No, this is back uh.
North of that?
No, back to the east, west, to the next one, to two uh.
Oh, west over there, well, I know where you're talking about.
Five or six miles back west, where the old Stuckey's used to be.
Yeah, I know.
You go a half mile north and there's a big pile right there, had to be on the Vesper Road.
Well, and my suggestion would be take some of these highly traveled, what do they call them, major collectors, Union, Vesper Road, those kind of things. Uh, I think my road where the school is, yeah.
Iron where I'm at.
Yeah, I mean, if you took those routes and really applied some material with the instruction that do not.
Do not grade it, do not grade it in a ditch.
Right, right, I mean, then you get a more long-term plan and that creates time. If the graders aren't worried about redoing those roads every year, then they can move on to some of those minor collectors and straighten them up. I mean, forget the dirt roads right now, we're not even barely, that's a matter of an individual's request to get to a pasture or something like that. We need to really start at the meat of it and get that.
I agree. We need to take care of our major routes.
That we know people are traveling on, they leave the county to go to work, they, you know.
I agree, there's some roads you got a hundred cars a day going on it, there's some you got two. And and we need to prioritize that better.
Or if you know there's a feedlot, I mean, obviously there's a lot of traffic on that road, there are semis, we need something more permanent and to make sure that there's a runoff and that it's not constantly being, you, we did, we're almost overtending some of the high-traffic roads. Then we're undertaking the ones that get these silted-in shoulders. And we have a lot of minor collectors, they call them, that are turning into a a trough, so.
Could you apply for a grant to fix that highway south of Sylvan to interstate, make it less rough?
Someone actually suggested dig that up and use that as your asphalt millings and then reinvest in laying a new road.
Should be the state fixing it, right?
No, that's.
From Sylvan to the highway is still us.
I seventy?
Yes, because one eighty-one goes west to the lake, so that it becomes a, it's an unmarked road, actually, we don't even put markings on it, which people can figure out a lot.
I thought that was state road.
No, 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 that's, Ellsworth goes a mile and picked, Lincoln picks up and comes north.
Okay.
But Ellsworth's road's like a boulevard, it's got paint and it's smooth and it's wonderful.
And it's immediately apparent when you hit Lincoln County.
Yeah, and you're going like this and, and it ain't marked, it's really, you know, no marking, not night and raining, it's hard when you meet somebody to go down that road. Anyhow.
All right, well, I'll give Mister O'Hare a call and you say that you request to get your road completed over there, right?
Yeah, I'd like to get it done, so.
Okay. Especially now it's drier, had it rain in a day or two.
Couple of days.
Yeah, which is.
So it's gonna rain tomorrow, so.
Well, it's supposed to rain tomorrow, right?
Okay.
Hopefully we'll miss it again. It's time to plant and cut weed, isn't it?
It is.
Yeah. Okay, thanks, dude.
Thank you. I was going to approve the street bills that we worked at. I don't see anything on there that wouldn't really be our responsibility at this point. Well, yeah, we do need to question them. Dawn, would you maybe have um Hannah just ask them why these ones are coming in from two thousand eighteen?
You're right.
We, we don't wanna be double-billed, but.
We did not pay any of those, cause she looked back, so, and she had to obtain the bills for.
Okay, okay. Well, I signed them. Do we have any more business to come up for the board?
I don't pay with that.
I, well, I told you in Cole-Hoskell County.
Be near Wednesday, right?
Wednesday, we will be here at ten and we will be. Well, we'll have a presentation from the third company of the benefits management and were we maybe gonna talk to Eric Otting?
No, cause remember he didn't do the budget.
Oh, that's right, okay.
You're gonna talk to Carrie and Dan and Ray and Strah.
Okay, so we'll talk to landfill and recycling center employees, it sounds good. And what did, we still need to do our evaluations. Could we put that on the agenda for next Monday? Did we put that on the agenda anywhere, Dawn?
Okay, I think next Monday is full as well.
The twenty-fourth?
Just being opened up when Michael said he was gonna do one, but yes, I'm almost sure the twenty-fourth is already.
Okay, so let's go ahead and do it, let's put that on the agenda for July first. To do our, we have evaluations to do and I know you may not have done it yet, but the plan is to send out the self-evaluations to the employees that did not have a director or that didn't have oversight management to do their evaluation. Okay.
And if I'm wrong about the next week, I'll I'll schedule it then.
Okay.
And if not.
Okay, well, we're, I mean, we were almost on time today with everything, this is kind of a shorter meeting, but I really don't have anything else to bring to the table right now.
I don't either.
We can discuss some of these other things.
Yeah, Wednesday.
Yeah, if anything develops. I did, I signed them.
Oh, that's all, we don't need a motion?
Yeah, no, cause they're, it's just.
Sounds good.
I do want to follow up on the appendix A with Mister Grace.
Yeah.
And.
What do, now, I thought we had a pretty good meeting with him, but.
I felt like the clarification of the responsibilities between the tenant and landlord was excellent. I am still concerned about.
Well, the.
Not only the back rent a- and the rent that's not being paid, but I I'm still concerned about the transition that possibly needs to happen.
Well, he he's talking about, he has these accounts payable and they have to two hundred fifty, three hundred grand, right?
We don't know exactly what it is.
Well, anyway, uh, but but the thing is, is we need to determine if we, if if we would wanna get his license. What transition that would be, right?
I'm, I'm saying if we consider all options, he's either going to re- remain and fulfill fulfill his lease and then want to leave, or and then want to stay, or he's not going to remain and fulfill his lease. And I just want it said publicly that the commission is not responsible for his exiting from the scene. So if he does wish to exit the scene at any time, it just requires his signature on the child paperwork through the state for us to acquire the license.
But we, but we need to determine how make how, how we get the license. If we get a new license, not his, if we get his, it sounds like we're gonna have to pay for it and uh, and you know, you know, it's, you know, up there with that expensive type of situation there, so we need to figure that out here.
I agree.
We need, and I don't know who, I don't wanna swear here, but I reckon, I don't know who can tell us about the licensing stuff, but can't we just get another one from the state when we exits or? Or if we get, you're working with a couple other new outfits.
I do, I have, I have the.
Maybe they would know how, maybe they would come with a license. Could they come with their own license and then take over us?
I'm not sure, because I think the license is specific to the facility.
For the facility, okay.
So that's the big hangup, again, I.
Man, that's what we need to figure that license issue out, other, because I, you know what, we talk.
Well, and unfortunately, I'm gonna say, I'm as much to blame as a- as anyone that's been on the commission during this time because we've paid an attorney out of Topeka to not be able to get us that answer either.
I know.
And that's frustrating.
I agree, I agree.
Dawn, have we received another bill recently from Mister Hay? Are we, are we owed any, are we owing any bill on that?
I haven't seen one, that that doesn't mean that.
Since the last one that we looked at, because I, it was.
I have not seen one, but I can ask again.
You know, you, you called that one lady from K-Das, right? She seemed very.
Patty Brown.
Wonder if we could, would she know anything about licenses?
Well, yes.
Well, that's, maybe we should talk to her about this.
Well, that's how we figured out that the child paperwork is just a signature. We don't have to pay anyone to get someone to transfer a license. It's up to him to transfer it because he owns it.
Yeah.
Getting the new license is the issue because you have all these new regulations, if they're gonna give out a new license in two thousand nineteen.
Then we may have to comply with the, our old grandfather building may not.
But here's, here's the question. If someone's holding our license hostage for X amount of dollars, could we spend Y and get our own license? Do we wanna pay someone else's bills or do we wanna upgrade the facility to get the same license? If we're gonna spend the money is what I'm saying. I'm not, I'm not putting anything on the table.
Well, I'm hoping that we could, grandfather in our facility, cause we cannot afford to, if we had to give, if they make us.
The biggest issue is the width of the wa- of the corridors, you can't just.
Well, you'd have to re, you'd have to rebuild a whole little nursing home, man, and that's not feasible.
Right.
So, we gotta go with the grandfather where we are, or we can't hardly go, in my opinion.
Right.
Unless I'm wrong here, but, anyway, that, the license is something we gotta really find out what's going on with, because you know, I thought this discussion was very good today though with him, we kinda know where we're standing, what's going on, you know? And I think if, even if we don't see eye to eye on things, we at least know where we're at, you know?
Right, and I will say, the part that cannot be disclosed from the executive session is that what the financial situation is. But I will say that there is, there was mention of subsidy from the county, and again, it needs to be understood, right now, the county budgets a line item for the nursing home out of the general fund. If we were going to increase our budget by a certain amount to compensate, to give any more money to that, we still have a tax lid to deal with. So if we're not going to put up for a public vote on a special stipulation, mill levy for the nursing home, then really, we don't have the financial justification to just boost the the line items for the nursing home. Do you see what I'm saying?
Well, we'd have to go to the vote, right?
That's what I.
Yeah, well, we'd have to go to a mill, uh, to a ballot initiative, uh, to request three, four mills, whatever. Yeah, I think so, because that's what we, we've been talking about since I've been involved, if we get a new management firm, they're, they're not gonna come here and run this and lose money, so we're gonna have to, and they're gonna, that's what, you know, and so we may have to subsidize or or not, you know? What do you think, if there'd be any possibility of keep working with Mister Grace, if he would try to pay down, give us partial rent, try to pay down his stuff, you think that would work, you, or not?
Well, my primary concern with the way that things were going for the past year, it seemed just like, I'll give the example of the assisted living, it seemed like it was insinuated that we were supposed to do the advertising for that. I mean, that was just insinuated. I don't agree with that, because we are operating, we're, we're maintaining the building. We're not operating the business. Advertising, staffing, all of that is on the.
Right, right, he's running the business.
Right, so, I'm afraid that that was poorly done, which it's maybe a learning experience, I'm not being judgmental because I don't run that type of business, but it seems like there's a lot of room for improvement and maybe the new management that they have there is going to improve that.
Promote it better. Like I said, on assisted living to him, uh, you know, we, the other places are full.
Right, why isn't ours?
Well, at least, doesn't seem, I don't see ads or nothing saying we're open for business, and I don't, maybe.
The perfect, the perfect example, well, and the other thing that we didn't talk about with him today that is still a sore subject for me, the uh, um, the home healthcare, okay? There was a functioning home healthcare business operating from Lincoln Park Manor. That has been extracted from the business and sent elsewhere. You wanna talk about a deficit building up? That home healthcare was supporting the whole system there, now it's not there to help. So why should we be asked to help fund something that revenue was taken away from? Really, the county, if we're gonna use milder, uh, mill levy money, services for the elderly, we should just run our own uh, home health, and then we can use that money to subsidize the nursing home. Do you see what I mean?
Yeah.
Taking the home health away from that was a detriment, it took one of the legs right out from under it.
Yeah.
So now why should we prop that leg up with tax money?
Yeah.
Business speaking, I mean, I don't, I don't, I'm not advocating for leaving the nursing home to just crumble, but there has to be a tactful way to approach that.
Yeah, no, I agree.
And I think we could rediscover what a long-term care unit means for the hospital, because I know there's a lot of pressure against that, but it seems like a lot of places are doing that. Marion County.
Instead of words, have a, instead of have a sifted living, you would have long-term care, transition stuff, something like the hospital and that. That'd be, you'd have to bring, bring that up to them, where I would, I guess.
Right, I mean, we, that's not something we could force unless we just said we were gonna withhold our subsidy.
They had it, I wonder why they ever stopped.
Well, there is a question that, but other counties do it, so you're talking about what is the difference in the subsidy? If we're giving a hundred twenty thousand and it's gonna cost us giving two hundred thousand instead of a hundred and twenty for the hospital to take care of it, do we want the headache of leasing out the nursing home with this issue for a hundred and twenty? Or do we up the ante, give the eighty thousand, add that on to the hospital subsidy and have them take care of it? Do you see what I mean? I don't know the numbers that well, and the projection that we got from the auditor from the hospital only showed what in my opinion is the worst-case scenario, so.
Are you gonna go tomorrow night to the meeting, hospital?
Yes.
I think I will, well, I'm out of hand, but.
Yes.
We could bring that up and uh, see what they say, Mister Granville and the rest of you.
He'll have to re-explain it and I know he'll, he'll say, he's already explained it twice to me, but um, that's not my forte, so I don't.
No, it's complex either, this hospital, medical stuff is, it's complex, you have.
And my question is, if if I can't understand it, that's one thing, but the other counties are doing it. So it's not impossible, the numbers fit in somewhere and maybe the other counties that are doing it are paying more out in a subsidy to their hospital than we're paying to our nursing home, so it's not gonna work financially, but maybe not, I'm not sure. I know that in Marion County, the county hospital, the administrator of the hospital is also the administrator of the nursing home side, the long-term care side, so they have, and he has an assistant, you know, there's a double branch there, but he has all of it under his.
Now, you were, are you still working with some of these management?
Yes, I have two of them that I've been in contact with last week.
Are we in contact with them, where they can visit with us sometime?
Yes, they're gonna look at the information and.
Or you give them our, uh.
Not yet, I haven't given them, because I'm waiting on the non-disclosures.
Non-disclosure, we gotta get a attorney to.
I sent them that and then they need to send it back.
Who's that, Jennifer or Mister Hay or?
Well, I would suggest, just for the non-disclosures, we use our own attorney, I really.
We don't need, yeah, I don't wanna spend extra money, we don't have to. Yeah, we need to make sure we do it all the legal, uh, follow the legal stuff there.
Hannah said we have a bill for a hundred and thirty-six fifty to pay.
Dollars?
Yes.
Oh, that must have been one of the phone, phone conference or something, okay. Thank you for checking that, that's not bad, that must have been a.
For Mister Hay?
Yeah.
Hundred bucks?
Well, that's not compared, yeah, compared to what.
No, I mean, that's, I mean, that's, that's fine, okay, very good. Uh, good, yeah, if we wanna, we wanna get with these management, feel, and see where they're coming from. Ask them, ask them about licenses and stuff.
Exactly.
They'll know how to, they'll know how to do, they'll know how to do this.
Right.
And we'll have to say, here's the people we have, but our census. And uh, you know, that, like you say, throw all the details out of, is it feasible that we can get somebody like that come in?
Well, and I have to say, I mean, I appreciate your diligence on the whole issue, because you came into it in January and I'm frustrated because I've already heard all these things for a year now, but you're just kinda picking up where it's been left off and I know that's that's not easy, because you have to learn everything first and then apply it.
See it stale, cause it's, it's just bottom line, it's a good service for our community and applies uh, jobs and it also gives our elderly, who most of them from Lincoln, a place here locally with their family. It's just kinda sense to me that can, but if it doesn't work financially, maybe, you know, who knows? I hope, I hope it, I hope it does.
We have not thoroughly explored all options, because I don't think we've brought anyone to the table who has experience.
I agree, I think.
We're dealing with all the people who kind of are just thrown into the mix, and there's a difference between that or someone that says, oh, I've done that before, and then this is how I figured out.
These other people haven't re-managed it, we all, there's, there's, there's nursing homes every, all over the place, managing, up managing stuff every day. We can do, they should know all this.
But the one thing that's different about Lincoln County, we have never had our name on the license. Every other county that I've come across knew to have their smells on the license.
Control, because that's licensed, it's control.
It's your go, it's your green light.
Well, we're gonna have to deal with that.
Yeah.
Either with Mister Grace or the new way or something.
The only thing I can see that we should be contacting Mister Hay about again is his correspondence with the Secretary of State Department, or the Secretary of K-Das Department.
Maybe we ought to just call the Secretary of State.
Yeah, I think.
I mean, why, I mean, I, I like this, when you called this one lady from, I feel very impressed with her.
She's under the Secretary of K Dads, she's the licensing.
Go to her, maybe, and say.
Well, we can call her again.
I mean, I, she was very knowledgeable and very thorough, and seemed very helpful, I mean, that's great, it don't cost, it don't cost us.
We need to go back and listen to that meeting, and let's listen to our conversation with her again and see what the missing pieces are, what else we need to ask her.
Well, I think she, yeah, or we could just call her, you know, probably.
I know, but then she has to tell us the whole thing again, we forget, there's so much information, you can't remember.
Well, that's fine.
When was that, when?
Always like a month ago, longer than that, even.
Okay, I'll have to look through the minutes.
It was probably a couple of months, about middle of May or sometime around.
I think it was earlier than that, I wanna say it was March.
Oh, I don't think it was that early.
Really?
April, maybe.
Okay.
I'm guessing, I don't know.
I think.
It's been a couple of months.
I think it was before Easter, in my timeframe.
Anyway.
All right.
No, but I thought she was very helpful, and if, if we should, I think, at least maybe we could ask her questions on licensing and, uh, all this stuff. When we got a new administration, new governor, how are their, what's their feeling on licenses and so forth?
Well, the good news that I found out from talking with some people before about other nursing home issues. The Secretary of K Dads can basically do whatever they want, so I still have not gotten in contact with, well, I know it's a woman, and I can't remember her name.
Last year, so we just need.
But, yeah, I, I think they have ultimate authority, so they can call the shots on.
Well, that's, we're, we're in a special situation, cause we don't have any licenses, and you could say, hey, we wanna.
And we're a government-owned facility.
We wanna keep a nursing home open, one, we're at this situation.
I hear ya.
She's ready to go home, nothing to this yabber and bother.
May ninth, okay, it was May ninth, so let's listen to that one.
Anyway, are we done, or?
I believe so, I will adjourn the meeting until Wednesday at ten.
Okay. Yeah, I think that was a good.